I see Andy Scott, are you here, Mr. Coleman? Peggy, are you here? Okay, Jess. No, hold on to me. Sorry. Okay, I can hear you on the phone. Are you able to connect?
I've been fine for the last fifteen minutes. I keep getting away from the whole size of meetings.
Okay. All right, try, all right, try going to the district website. And then link from, from there, go to the announcement for the meeting.
Here's, here's the problem. I have a district, I have it doesn't allow me to go to the district website to bring it up.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Jess. All right, we're gonna wait to start the meeting until we have a forum. Then he'll join us as soon as he can. So we have myself, Andy, Jezlyn, Peggy is here. And Mr. Coleman will be joining us shortly. All right, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's seven twelve P M. Our first item is to approve the agenda. I want to make a couple of changes to the agenda before we start. Tonight mostly focuses on our reopening plan. So I want to move our administrative stuff up to the top of the agenda. Sorry, Deidre, I didn't think of this earlier. I want to move items four and five, the consent agenda and the, the action items. Up to spot number three. So we'll take care of those action items and consent items there. And then I'm, I'm gonna switch the order of the reports just regarding Mr. Ellis. I want to move his after the board reports. So if there's no objection from the board with those changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Move to approve the revised agenda?
Second.
Motion by Andy and second by Jess to approve the agenda as revised. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying hi.
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 All right, our second item are Zoom protocols and I'm not sure, is it Deidre helping tonight? There we go. The protocols for our Zoom meetings, for board meetings, and I'll just read them. Thank you all for joining us tonight for the Prosser School Board Meeting. Well, we appreciate all in attendance unless you're called on by the board for a comment. We asked that all guests throughout the meeting, please mute your, mute your microphone. Additionally, it's important to note that we do not address questions or reply to comments through the text feature that's offered here on Zoom or in a spoken format. As noted in the agenda announcement for this meeting. As noted in the agenda announcement for this meeting, if you have a public comment that you would like shared with the board, we request that you submit your comments in writing in advance to Deidre Holmberg at ProsserSchools.org. And those will get sent on to the board members. We appreciate your assistance in allowing the board to conduct an efficient and effective meeting about the business of the Prosser School District. Thank you, Deidre. We can take that down. All right, so we're gonna move on to. On your agenda, it's item number four, which is the consent agenda. It includes some certified personnel, classified personnel, approval of minutes, volunteer coaches, and an agreement with the Health District. Use of our facilities if needed. So need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Peggy and second by Jess to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying hi.
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 Bye.
I think you, motion passes. Our next item is item number five on the agenda, which are, are the action items. We'll go through them separately. Item one is warrants and payables.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants payable as presented.
Yeah, I just wanted to check the date.
I will second it.
The January thirteenth, okay. Motion by Peggy and second by Andy. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right, second is the award of laptops and Chromebooks. And if you had a chance in your agenda to look at that, that is through the grant that Dr. Dean secured through the Special Services Department. Need a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
I will second that as well.
Motion by Jess and second by Andy to approve the awarded laptops and Chromebooks. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying hi.
Hi.
All right, that motion passes. So Deidre, just for the minutes, we're done with the consent agenda and the action items. We'll move back to the beginning of the agenda and we'll start with the Assistant Superintendent Reports. The first one is Deanna Floritz.
I just have a couple of things. I'm, I'm, my dyslexia committee met last night. We reviewed three more assessments approved by O S P I. We have five left, really four, because one's the same as some of the others. We'll be reviewing in another month and then hopefully in the next couple of months after that, our committee will be able to make a decision. We've seen some really interesting products. The second thing is, there is the communities in schools is doing a build a dream, drive up food and essentials distribution event. I know Tammy was working on getting that information out to parents. It's Monday on Martin Luther King Day from twelve to four. It is in Pasco. At Kurtzman's Park. They are giving out food, essential items, blankets, books, and grocery gift cards for the first five hundred families. So it is a drive. But they really have some great items there to support families who might need some extra help right now during our pandemic. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Any questions for Deanna from, from the board? All right, thank you, Deanna. Next is the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations, Mr. Reynolds.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, sorry to inundate you with three months worth of financial reports, but I wanted to get these in your hands as quickly as I could. We're pretty much caught up. I'm finishing up December within the next day or two, so I'll have that ready for you for the next board meeting. I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time going over these reports. They're, of course, cumulative through November. We've received, as you can see on the graph there, about twenty-three percent of revenue for the year, and we spent a little under twenty-two percent and being a quarter through the year. So we're doing, you know, pretty good as far as revenue and expenditures. The state has been a little slow in approving some of the grants, so I know we'll be getting some more dollars in December and January, and then we'll start having each month be reimbursed basically for the federal grants. I do want to, so if you have any questions on the financials, I can either answer them now or you can, you know, send me an email or something and I can answer them that way, maybe in the interest of time.
Do you happen to know?
One thing.
Enrollment, I'm sorry?
Oh, I just had one thing, Craig. It's Peggy. I, I thank you for sending me a hard copy of the report. It looks really, we're, you're doing, we're doing good as a district on trying to stay atop of all of this, so thank you.
We are. Thank you. You're welcome. As far as the enrollment for December. We're still up a year to date over the enrollment, a projection. The projection was twenty-four fifty-five. Excuse me, where the, the projection was twenty-four, twenty-six full-time equivalent, and we're at twenty-four fifty-five, so we're up twenty-nine students. And of course, the majority of that is at the high school. And we're up seventy-seven students at the high school, down in the other, the other locations. The last item that I have there, as you can see, is the appraisal. I received the appraisals at the end of the month of December. And it's interesting, as you can read there, each parcel separately is valued more than each than the combined value. Again, I call the appraiser and that said, help me understand that. He just said that parcels are, you know, big parcels of like fifty-five acres are not selling as, as rapidly. And so each parcel itself, if we were to sell, we probably want to sell each parcel by itself to attain a little more money. But again, if, if you want a copy of the appraisal, I can give that to you. Both appraisals together, I think seven twenty-five. But if we sold them valued separately, seven twenty-five, but if we sold them into, as a group combined, only four hundred and thirty-seven, five hundred. And I've been working with the new tenant out there and he's paid the first quarter, and we've talked about that he's aware of, of if the board does want to sell the property, you know, there is a three-month notification, and so he's, he's very aware of that. That's really all that I have for you tonight.
Greg, do you happen to know what the, and, and if you don't, we can, you can get back to me with it. The contingency fund balance from the high school is?
For the, for the capital project?
Right.
I, I don't have that on my, off the top of my head, Scotty.
Okay. Could you let me know? Maybe Dan has it. If we could, I just want to see where we're at with what we have remaining on that project.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board for Mr. Reynolds? All right, thanks, Greg. We'll move on. Our next report is athletics and activities. Mr. Lusk.
Hey there, guys. Thanks. In the report there, I included information from middle school and high school as we wrapped up the, the holiday season. The middle school continues their, their work in connecting with kids through their daily SWAVD classes, including A S B, and they had some holiday activities regarding Mid Valley Middle School Athletics. We have a meeting later this month, but everything at this point is on hold. A couple of Yakima Middle Schools have decided to bail on athletics for their kids for this year, but so there's more information to come there. At the high school level, activities, dozens of groups, different groups trying to find ways to connect in their virtual meetings. A S B had a virtual holiday contest, et cetera, which worked out really well. You'll hear more about that probably from the kids. We did continue our workouts, which went pretty well till the weather kind of kicked in, and since we were all outside, it made that a little bit difficult, but we still, when we resumed in January, we still had as many as a hundred kids, and with a little bit of sunshine, there's a few more kids coming out to work out. On the report, it does say that the return to play window ends on the twenty-third. A week ago, that was the information that we had. Since then, we've had a lot of information that's come in that I'll just touch on here in a second that could have an impact on our opportunity to participate. The other information I included in there was information regarding House Bill sixteen sixty and the policy thirty-five ten. There's a, it's pretty much all of the model policy that WASDA had. I can tell you that the different schools and districts that we've been trying to work with, when I say we, that's Craig, Sean, et cetera, trying to get information is that we seem to be out front on this, trying to get a policy. And so you have that policy. Craig, Sean, Darlene, myself, A S B Secretary, we're working on the procedures that would impact that implementation of that policy. But that should be in your hands for a first reading, and if we need to talk about that more as we go, we certainly can. The last little bit is that in the last few days since late in the week, last week, between the governor's information that's come out. There was a definite change in the plan of attack for activities, all everything in our state, obviously, relative to COVID. I just want you to know that there's information there that we're trying to add onto our website, so it's available. I did have a chance to send a bunch of information today. It was gathered. We had a meeting with W I A A and about a hundred and fifty other A Ds today. So there's some information that's available. I sent that to Matt because I wanted him to get his eyeballs on it, and it has some links that I just wanted to let you guys know about. And so when Matt's done looking at it, if he sends it your way, you can take a look. But basically, they've, W I has put a February one date as a possible return to fall sports. They've changed that on us again to fall sports. Obviously, there's different phases. The risk levels of the sports are pretty much the same, but they have some little different criteria. And I, I just want you guys to be aware of that and take a look. So there's a lot of work that's been going on around the entire state to try to provide some opportunities for kids to play. We are in a big part of that because our area, we have in our league, we have five counties. Now we have represented by three different regions, which the state wants us to look at. But in a nutshell, all of the A Ds in our league, in our area of the state and around the state are trying to do everything they can to find a way for kids to participate, to do that safely. We're in the process of putting some plans together. The state allows us to come up with a, a regional plan that would allow kids to go. And we're excited about the opportunity, but we've got plenty of, of work to do. Again, I would encourage you, when you get a chance, take a look at some of the links that we have, and those are on our site, our high school site, but it goes right to the information that the governor had or what W I has recently put out. We will. These new guidelines do provide an opportunity to go inside. We obviously have not done that in our district. But we'd need help from, are you okay from our district to be able to do that, to provide those opportunities for our kids? Well, that's about it for me. I hope that was five minutes.
Kevin, when you said the date for the W I A return for fall sports, I heard the first, but I didn't hear the month. Was that February?
February, February first. Yeah, and a lot of the, a lot of the groups, Scotty, the groups, there'll be the leagues or the areas that are having conversation. W I A will allow us to come up with a plan, whether it starts February first or whether it starts later. They've really given us some opportunities to do that. And again, in talking to our coaches over the last couple of days, and admin at the high school, our goal is to get kids back to participating. We want them to have some healthy options. And so we'll work with our people in our league, in our region to make that happen.
And how will the, and maybe it's in the information, but if you could help me with it, you said we were in different regions, so we go from here, actually Tri-Cities to Ellensburg now in that state region the governor gave. But we have different counties and we have different league, our the teams we play against are, are in different areas. How will they align that? What, what are you guys talking about to make that line up?
So the conversations are pretty simple, Scotty. They just said, you know what, we're gonna stay within our region, and our particular region is pretty large. It goes from Ellensburg through Walla Walla and all down through the valley. So there's teams in our league that, that might be way up north like Efrida, where they're having conversations with schools around them to be a part of their, I'll say league, if you want to call it that, but group to play, and we're talking the same thing. We've been talking to the, to the one A's in our area, to the three A's and four A's in our area to just say, hey, how can we put together some offerings for our kids?
And somebody to play.
Exactly. And the, the state, as far as the COVID numbers, they're using those regions, and they're developing a number that goes throughout that whole region. So at least then we'd all be on the same metric. We're all looking at the same thing.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board for Mr. Lusk? Thank you, Kevin, for your work on that. What, and, and we'll look forward to getting the information that you forwarded to Matt. The policy thirty-five ten regarding House Bill sixteen sixty. Deidre, let's put that on docketed for the next board meeting as the first reading. So the one twenty-seven meeting, we'll put it there, and then it just needs to be formatted into a district policy. And then we can get it out to the board members for first reading that. Is there a time limit on that, Kevin?
No, we're working on it. We know what we want to do and the impact, the positive impact it'll have for our kids. So we're not collecting any fees and fines at this point, so it, it gives us plenty of time.
Okay, we should be through with it then by the next meeting in February, if we can get the first reading done and move on to February and approve it. Thank you for your work. All right, next is the C T report, Rick.
Good evening, everyone. Hey, so just like Kevin and athletics, we want to get the C T E kids in and involved in their organizations, involved in their classes, because as we know, it's very hands-on and very difficult to do online. And that's been integrated into the, the phased, phased return to school. And so I'll talk more about that in, in more detail as we get to the different phases in, in the return to school plan, if that's okay.
Okay. Is there anything else from C T we need to know about tonight?
Uh, not, not at this point, no.
Okay, any questions from the board for Rick? All right, thanks, sir. We'll talk about it in a little bit. All right, move down. Nutrition report, Darlene.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm doing good. How are you today? I'd like to start off by thanking everybody who volunteered at Second Harvest on the fifth of this month at Twitch Strand. We'll be having another second harvest at the Bethel Church on the nineteenth. We need volunteers. You can sign up through the Second Harvest website or come to the Bethel Church at nine thirty on the nineteenth. We are still working on our free and reduced forms. We don't have very many out there that still need to be processed. We are also planning for when our students are coming back to school on how we're gonna do the mills. Right now, we're planning on if they are there half a day, the students would take the mills home with them. We would also still provide grabbing gold mills at our K R V Elementary and at our middle school. For our department, providing mills will depend on the model of the learning for the students. You have any questions?
No, thank you for your work on the second harvest. And their, their website is really easy to sign up to help. If you, if you want to volunteer, you go there and log on, and it tells you if they're full on volunteers already, or if they still need a few, it tells you how many they need and where to go. So if you can help out with that, we greatly appreciate it, and I know our families would too. And thank you, Darlene, and your staff for your work on getting the reduced, free and reduced lunch forms back in. Those are vital to our, our funding sources and to helping out the families that need those. So thank you very much. I know that number's dwindling down to very few that remain out there pending. So thank you for your work on that.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions from the board for Darlene on child nutrition? All right, thank you, Darlene.
Thank you.
You might want to stay with us. I know we're gonna talk about meals in a little bit when we get to the reopening plan, if you wanted to be part of that.
Yes, I'll still be here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're gonna move on to the migrant and bilingual education report, Eric Loretz.
Good evening, everyone. As you can, as you can see in my report, our, our students fluctuate, just so you know, depending on people coming and going in both programs. So I'll keep those numbers up to date as much as possible for every board meeting so that you have an accurate representation of what's actually going on in the district. For the migrant program, a quick highlight is we did provide some supplemental materials over the break for students. They were more of a workbook form, format, and a lot of the families appreciated it. Kids enjoyed them just because it was something activity based around academic concepts. And also for the migrant program is a highlight, we've had six Howson Middle School students participate in the Voices from the Field Winter Arts Academy. I believe there's one or two sessions left, and our new migrant student advocate, Lupe Maldonado, has been heading that up and working with O S P I on that. And so it's been a positive experience for those students. For the bilingual program, we continue to work on our dual language program. I have had a meeting with the secondary principals. Just so you know, we're already pre-meeting in regards to the cohort that's currently in fourth grade. When they arrive at the secondary level in middle school and in high school, we're trying to develop a plan and have that completed ahead of time before they get there. So it does take quite a bit of planning and forward thinking, so that's why it's better to start sooner than later. And so those conversations have already begun, and we're also continuing with professional development for all teachers in the secondary program as well as in the elementary. For the most part, we will begin our restart of academic tutoring, beginning on the nineteenth of January. We've sent out communications via email, robocalls, and posting it on our website as well. And so, yeah, in those things, we're also going to be working with our students and teaching them how to access the attestation through Skyward so that they're have that available to them. We've also already had conversations with Heights Elementary. Thank you so much, Ms. Saban, for opening her doors. We're gonna move the elementary tutoring from Bethel Church. It will now be held at Heights Elementary in the gym. So all the same protocols will still be in place. It's just the location has now changed. There were some scheduling conflicts that were coming up, and so it was just better for us to now start moving our students back into our buildings. And again, thank you, Ms. Saban, for opening up your gym and allowing that to happen. Other than that, everything else will still remain the same. Tutoring will occur Tuesday through Thursday from five thirty to seven P M. Secondary is held at Howson Middle School in the South Gym. And that's all I have for this evening. Are there any questions that I can answer for anyone?
I have one, Eric.
Sure.
With the number of kids in tutoring, it looks like I'm just doing the math through, like five percent of your migrant and bilingual population are participating in tutoring. How, how can the district help increase that number up from five percent? Is there anything more we can do?
It, so we've had a lot of conversations. Our recruiter, Ms. Selina Hazard, has done an amazing job reaching out to families. One of the things, one of the challenges we have is transportation. That's a conversation we're having within our department to see if we can go and actually pick up some of these students and bring them to tutoring. But today in our director's meeting, we also kind of expanded on that conversation and talked about maybe some additional routes that may be available that would not only include migrant bilingual students, but also special education students as well. So those talks are continuing, and we're trying to come up with a solution for those issues.
Okay, if there's any barriers there that we can help with, let us know. We want to increase that number as much as we can for you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Loretz?
Yeah, this is Scott. Hey, I heard you say that the, the Mrs. Saban, Principal Saban opened up the Heights to their gym to the kids who say, and going to Bethel, wasn't that something that should be, have looked at through all the schools before, instead of going to a private area?
Uh, yes, but at, at the original time that we began the tutoring.
Yes, but at, at the original time that we began the tutoring, because of the restrictions from the governor, the use of Bethel Church was what was open to us at that point in time in order for us to, to provide tutoring for kids. So it had nothing to do whether or not somebody was willing to open it up. It had to do more with what the government was trying to tell us where we could and could not hold things. And so I really thank the Bethel Church for helping us out with the tutoring. And in addition to that, they're opening up their property as well for our second harvest that Ms. Maro had mentioned earlier in her report. So they'll continue to be a partner with us and for the Prosser School District. It's just at this point in time, now with the restrictions kind of changing, we're now moving to our own buildings and using our own facilities.
So did we, did we ask all the principals, or she was just the first volunteer?
Um, oh, yeah, it went out to everybody, but logistically, it also worked best at Heights because it does provide us in one location of town. It's easier for some of the Woodstrand families to come in and access right there to Heights, as well as for parents to pick up and drop off. Because often, some of our families have both elementary and secondary students. So rather than going across town to drop, you know, an elementary student off at Bethel, and then a secondary student off at Housel, now we're essentially a block away. And so it makes it easier for parents.
Any other questions from the board for Mr. Loretz? Lost my way. All right, thank you, Eric.
Thank you. You all have a good evening.
You too. All right. Maintenance report, Mr. Shell.
Good evening. We, I kind of broke it down into four different areas on what we're looking at. Kind of a, just a continuation of things we've been doing for the last couple of months. We're starting to have some serious talks with the custodians on, you know, what, what the new schedules are going to look like. Who's going to do what? At what time are we going to do what? We ordered some additional little misters, foggers, so that we can, it looks like we may have some situations where we're going to have to clean the building, building quickly. And so if we had some more equipment, which we ordered today, that would be a big help. Physical layout, social disney arrangements, we've been working on is we've removed furniture from most of the buildings at Heights. It seems like we've done a lot. We've removed some tables and we're going to surplus them just so that we can get the, the amount of space in the classrooms that we need to meet the requirements. Woodstrand, we're doing some painting on the, on the lawns where we're going to be able to separate the kids into different groups. Staffing. We're, you know, we're assuming that all of the custodians are going to come back. I think it's probably imperative that they do. There again, schedules, do we have nighttime activities? How many people do we need? Do we have a lunch program? Things that are going to be shaken out here real quickly. Supplies, we're looking, I think we're looking really good on supplies. We picked up thirty cases of N-ninety-five masks today from Pasco. And we put those into surplus. We have another large order of the nitro gloves coming in, should be in probably tomorrow. We have the large order that Matt made, I think in December, that should be coming in soon. And the principals have been working on what they're going to need. Those, those orders are large. And of course, we continue to work with the nurses. They've been a big help, so a shout out to them. I think that's it.
Dave, do you have any estimates on the the outstanding delivery of PPE? You mentioned a couple of them there that you said should be here shortly. The gloves tomorrow, you got the N-ninety-five masks. What else was, was it that we're waiting on?
Well, we had, we had, and Matt could address this, but we had the large order in December. I think it was the twelfth of December that we ordered. And we knew it was going to take a long time. I don't, I was never actually told exactly when they're going to be here. I was just told the middle of January, so we're getting pretty close.
Oh, okay.
And then, all right, and then we have some, we have some large orders that the principals are doing on their own. You know, separators to keep kids separated in the hallways. We got some air purifiers, some hand sanitizers that, that are battery operated, so the teachers don't have to touch anything. So things are moving along pretty well.
So you're not tracking the delivery dates of those? You're just dealing with the receipt of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Yes, they, they said the first of January, and they bumped it back. And so last time we talked about our initial order that the state went out for bid, our gloves got hung up in customs. And then this time, we ordered a lot of nitrate gloves. And they said those need to go because of case counts and full ICU units. They said the, the gloves, the nitrate gloves that we ordered, the medical profession has priority to them. And so they offered up vinyl gloves. Allison, Allison and Linda have been good at finding another, another source for those. They're crazy expensive. They're like four times more expensive than, than what they were initially. And so we purchased some, and we're going to use some vinyl gloves. We, we had some to begin with. If you recall, when COVID first hit, we gave a lot of our PPE away to Prosser Memorial. So, yeah, we're, we're still working on that. Craig has reached out to the Benton County Emergency Management, and he's acquired some of the, some supplies. And so I'm confident that we have enough, enough supplies to begin in a hybrid model and sustain it for a period of time. And so that's kind of, that's kind of the, the short of the long of it, is that, you know, it was supposed to come in early January, and that's been bumped back. We were supposed to get more stuff, but actually, in consistent purchasing, we've acquired quite a bit. And so that, you know, like as Dave, David said, to the mitigation strategies, not only have we focused on PPE, but mitigation strategies at the building to have signage dividers, a lot of these things in the classroom. So our, our teachers don't have any anxiety, and we can show our parents kind of what it looks like, and it's safe for everybody.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shell before we let him off the hook here? All right, thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
All right, next is our security department, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening, Glenn. So the only, we're still waiting on the committee, the Safety Security Committee to be formed, so the reform, so that we can start tackling some of those issues that need to go before them, so that those issues can be brought before you guys for approval. The COPS grant that we still are having difficulty accepting. The Department of Justice has scheduled a listening session on the fifteenth of January, but have not provided a way for us to attend that virtually. So I'm, I've got a message in to the Department of Justice manager for our grant to find out if she can provide that information to us. We have hired two substitute armed guards. They're primarily providing security up at the new high school on weekends, evenings. Doing really well. They've, they've not only done their safe schools training and got that completed, but they've also done the firearms and qualifications and training with, with me for, for gap. As far as the activities of the guards, what the, what the officers are doing right now is they're just working with their building administrators, trying to get this plan to get our kids back in school, because we're really anxious. And that's about it.
Okay, on the reassembling the, the committee, if you just let me know, let Matt know your, your team. If we can, we can do that through a Zoom call, a Zoom meeting, and get those things approved that are outstanding, that you need approval on through the committee, so we can get them to the board. So just let me know when you would like to meet, so we can do that. Sean or Deidre can help us set up a Zoom meeting and make it happen. Let Matt know when you'd like to build it done.
Okay.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Thompson? All right, thank you, sir. Next is Dr. Dean, Special Services Department.
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you here. I want to start out by thanking the board and Mr. Ellis for supporting the hiring of a psychometrician. It's made a big difference having someone to be able to assist gather information and conduct academic assessments and proctor the virtual cognitive assessments for us. And it really helps because she's also bilingual, so we're getting our testing done in a much better, well, a much prompter manner and more complete than we were able to do before. Hotspots have arrived. We're going to begin. Now, I did this report a week ago, so we're going to set up, and next week, we're going to start distributing those to the students who need them. And we'll be pulling back the ones that came out of general education. Rotations that went out so that there'll be more hotspots available for the district. And it sounds like the ordering or the awarding of the contract for the laptops for the teachers and the touchscreen Chromebooks have been taken care of through the tech department, who I'd really like to thank for all of their help also. We had one exception for January, and I have the breakout of the student count in the tiers, and that's what I have for right now. Do you have any questions?
I have one, Cindy. The Chromebooks and teacher laptops and document cameras. Is that, I understand that'll be for the special education teachers, but are, is that also for the parapros that are working with students?
Yes, we also have them for the parapros.
Okay.
We did not order document cameras for the parapros, I don't believe, but.
Okay. Is there a need for that? Are there, there some that use that device that might assist them or not?
I was not informed of any, but if we find out that we need it, I believe that we will be able to support that.
Okay.
The grant that.
Any questions from the board for Dr. Dean? All right, thank you, Cindy. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, next is the technology, technology department, Sean Scholz.
Good evening. I'm like everyone. Hi, like everyone in our district, our department too, has been very immersed in the return to school support or the support for the return to school plan. We've been getting the classrooms ready for teachers, for those that are going to be doing a hybrid situation. And we've been setting up our administrative offices for better virtual access. They've got conference monitors now, so they'll be able to help perform their administrative duties from their offices, as well as we've been doing some best practices, some tip sheets, some helpful trainings that our staff might need as they come back. And we have to, we could potentially deal with several different situations. We've also been dealing with construction up at PHS, the network design for the support equipment. That would be our cameras, security doors, A.V., classroom audio. All of that is, we're right in the middle of that. Hopefully, we will have another couple of meetings about the low voltage equipment in the next several weeks, and then that will be finished. The projectors for the gyms are on order, and will be going up, as well as the phones for the schools have been ordered. And then the only other big project that we have going on right now is E-rate funding year twenty-twenty-one starts. Hopefully, I will be able to file our RFP for that, which will pay for the remaining access points needed in the schools for our wireless infrastructure and some remaining switches that will be needed with the new construction at the elementary schools. That is all I have. Do you have any questions?
I'm sorry, I missed it on the phones. What was the update there?
They've just been. Well, we're actually going to be doing phones district-wide. We had to choose a new system or start rolling out a different system than our Toshiba system, because we can't expand it to the new school. So yes, we are right in the middle of getting those set up as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board for Sean on technology? All right, thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you.
All right, transportation, Amy.
Hi. So we're doing the same that we've been doing. We're delivering meals on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're working on getting our OSPI guideline cleaning down on our buses for when school starts back. We have all of our supplies. It's just coming up with our inside procedure for all the drivers. So every bus will be cleaned the same way each and every time. I'm working with Darlene in food services on how we're going to load meals when school's back in session. And we're having a pretty decent plan on that. And then we're, our Bus Boss, our new routing software, is all up to date with all of our current routing. And we're just waiting for student lists, so we can start doing the days for each student. So we'll have computerized lists of students that are going. And then we're hoping to have all of our information back and get our winter star reporting done by February first.
Amy, with the Bus Boss program, was there any kind of training or tech support that they offered with that to get our staff trained up on that system, or do we need that?
And what, Bus Boss came out for three days when they implemented it and worked with Cindy and I on that. And then we have a technical support contract that came with it for four years.
That's awesome.
And then their tech department has been working closely with Blake to keep it up and running.
Great. I remember when you pitched that program to us. I'm glad to hear that it's here and working. Thank you. Any questions from the board for Amy? All right, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, that takes us to. Yeah. All right, so this takes us to our reopening plan from the principals. And we're going to start the presentation with Deanna Flores, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. She's going to present, and then.
Scotty, I did have one question.
I'm sorry.
I had one question.
Deanna, we'll be right back to you.
For Amy on the and, and for Matt on the bus stuff. So I know we've talked about getting this open back up, get rocking and rolling here, and getting kids back in the class. And one of the big ones was bus routes and all that other stuff. I, I, I'm trying to kind of figure out why bus routes is such a tough one. Can't we just go back to the original bus routes? And then as we figure out what kids are there, we morph back into the, you know, we, we just adapt as, as kids aren't going to come back to school and kids that are going to come back to school doesn't, isn't it just as simple as just getting the, the bus drivers out there and getting them, picking kids up, getting them to school? Because to me, that seems simple. And then as we get into, you know, outbreaks, or as kids are not coming to school, they're going to stay at home and work from, work from home. Can't we just ad lib those?
Yeah, and so, so my answer to that, and Amy, you can correct me or add or, you know, tell everybody I'm wrong, but our, our bus, our transportation funding is based upon ridership. And of course, when we're, when we're looking at a specialized. And of course, when we're, when we're looking at a specialized offering, say like a hybrid model and knowing that we may have, you know, say that we have a third of the students stay home and remain online. And we have a third of the students that go Monday, Tuesday, and then another third that go Thursday, Friday. To, to use that software to try and identify efficiencies in routing that we can actually, you know, be cost effective with the money that we receive from the state for that ridership. Amy, is that close?
Yes, that's really close. The other main reason we want to make sure we have our student information correct is with the AABB schedule. We, we may not need to stop at every stop because not all the students will be there. So it'll affect the times for the students following that stop. So we really want to get down to have better timing so that all the students get out there and they get the bus and they do come into school.
Well, I appreciate all those. So in my opinion, it's just a simple, simple, let's just get, let's just stop. You're not there. And I know that waste gas, diesel, whatever it takes, but let's get it started, not be one of the checkmarks that has to be there. So, so I want to just get the kids picked up, the kids on the next bus stop, just like when their mom couldn't get them dressed or they didn't eat enough breakfast or whatever, they, they got left behind. They had to figure out how to get to school. And back in our day, my opinion is that we just get started. We get moving, we get rocking and rolling. And, and if they're not there, when they're not there, is it efficient? No. Are we going to waste some money? Sure. But in, in my, my mind, it, it needs to be one of those things that we just, we work out as we go along. We don't, that's not one of the checkmarks that we have to wait to get school started. So that's just my opinion and maybe I'm over simplifying it, but that's where I'm at. Thanks, Amy and, and Matt. I appreciate your input and I'm sure I'm oversimplifying it. So thank you.
And Scott, it does come up a little bit later as we get into the reopening plan. There is an item on transportation consideration. So maybe we can dive into it a little deeper there too for you. All right. Any other questions from the board for transportation before we move on? Okay. We're going to move on to the next area, which is our reopening plan. And as I said, Deanna Flores, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction will be presenting the plan and then she's going to have administrators from each of the buildings participate as we work through the slides and, and share and present slides as we go. If you could do one thing, it just dawned on me, there are members that are, community members that are attending are. I mean, that aren't on the video, so they don't know who's talking. If as Deanna, as our folks come on to present their portion of the plan, of the plan, could you have them identify themselves and what school they're from? So that all of our guests know who's speaking. And if we could do that through the rest of the, the meeting, that might help. Because there are some folks that don't know who's talking. And that, that would be helpful to them. So we'll start with you, Deanna.
Okay, we'll do our best to remember our principals. Everybody needs to be sure and introduce yourselves and say where you're from. If someone forgets, we'll catch up on that. Thank, I, I thank you for the opportunity to present. This is a plan that the administrative team has been working on along with the connections of other folks in our district, you know, Amy, Darlene, there are so many, Dave, there are so many pieces to, to developing a plan like this. Deidre, if you could put the PowerPoint up.
I will. Just give me one second. I didn't know I was going to do that. Just give me a sec.
When I was a middle school teacher, I used to have boat day Tuesdays. So if you could plan on moving the board meeting to Tuesday, I could still do that iteration.
Brian Bailey is looking spiffy tonight. Awesome. Thank you.
That's about time. Last time I saw anything recognized.
Everybody likes red too.
Might be a bad time to bring it up, but you look like a Uniper. That's all I wanted to say.
Oh, um, okay. So go ahead and go to the next slide, Deidre. Thank you. So this plan, like I said, was collaboration. It's something we've been working on really all year. The building principals, Matt, our department heads, and there will be multiple people contributing during the plan. So we'll try to be sure and remember to state our names and which buildings we work from. Go ahead and keep going, Deidre. Thank you. So there are seven, this is a seven step plan. And this is a proposal. So this is what we're proposing as a phased in plan for students to return to school. We'll be talking about the plan for the student return. We do have transportation considerations, food service considerations, safety protocols. And then we have a needs checklist of some of the, the things that we're working on to ensure we're prepared for the students. Go ahead. This next slide, I apologize. I know it's difficult to read. I, I did include a separate copy of this document in the board packet. So if you scroll down, if you go past this presentation, you can see this in a larger scale. Thank you, Deidre. This plan puts us, like I said, in seven steps and we actually already have our, our in step two at this time. So our students are attending classes virtually. We do have tutoring services available. Step three is the step that we're proposing that we move into next. And there'll be more detail about these presented by the principals as we move on. But we are asking for a phased in approach, beginning with a half day where students are in person in the morning, some groups of students. And then in the afternoon, students would be online. Students that are home and not at school would also be online. Where in the elementary, they would, group, group A would be on a Monday, Tuesday attendance time. With Wednesdays, everybody would be online. Thursday, Fridays, group two would attend school. And we're, and that's a 50/50 model with the kindergartners, first and second graders attending on the AABB or group one, group two schedule. At the middle school and the high school, we're proposing small cohort and our principals will talk about that a little bit more on some future slides. And as the plan moves forward, you can see in step four, we would increase the number of students attending. We would adding third through fifth grade in that AABB schedule, not just the small cohort. And if you're not familiar with small cohort model, that's a smaller group of students, like one to six, maybe up to one to nine or 10 that are attending for support at school, but it's not the 50/50, half students on two days, half students on a different two days. And then as we move on to step five, six and seven, by the time we get to step seven, that would be us back to full school. Things with COVID and the pandemic are well under control. This is a play, a, a, a working plan. So it's not like we have this set in stone and this is exactly what, what we, what we would expect to do. An example might be in step three, which is the step we would hope to move into next. Our sixth through 12th grade students would be in a small cohort intervention model. So we would have approximately one to six students and they would be the highest need students attending. They would still be doing work online, but also getting support from a teacher in person. And maybe we see after the first couple of weeks, we can do more than six. We may not be in the step four yet, but we might add some students in as we see the availability to do that. So we'll talk some more in more detail about each of these steps as we move on. So Deidre, I'm going to have you go ahead and go to the next slide. As I said, we've had, we're in step one. We are currently in step two. And that is, hopefully we'll be able to put that in the past. So let's go ahead and move on to step three. Where I'm going to ask Chris Moore and Brian Bailey to join the conversation.
So hello, I'm Chris Moore. I'm Principal of Keene Riverview. I'm going to just kind of give you an overview of the K2 proposal in step three, and then it will be expanded on by Kevin Gilman in the next slide. So in K2, it's a 50/50 model. So it's 50% of our, the kids that want to come back to school hybrid model, 50 would come on AA and 50 would come on BB. Right now, the idea is those would be Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, Friday. On Wednesday, the whole population of students would be distant learning. So those who aren't attending in the hybrid model will still be attending with their people that are attending in school on Wednesdays. So everyone will be hybrid. Students who are not attending in the district will be on distant learning five days a week. In this model, the elementary doesn't start, the elementary three through five doesn't start yet. They have intervention in small groups, kind of like what Deanna just said, cohorts of six of the most neediest kids. And those kids would come the same time, Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, Friday.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Absolutely.
So what's, what's the decision to go Monday, Tuesday with the kids and Thursday, Friday with the kids instead of going like Monday? Is it, is it because we, we think we can reinforce it a lot better for two days in a row? And then give them some stuff to work on for the rest of the week? Or is it, I mean, I know there's, there's a lot of different models out there. I'm just asking and I'll certainly, certainly. You know, go to whatever you guys think. I'm just asking.
I know that there's a, a number of answers to that. Number one, that was the model that the teachers went with. So the teachers were, the teachers in our district were surveyed and they liked the AABB model. It allows us to do deep cleaning on Wednesday so that two different cohorts, instead of, it's going to be a quick turnaround to clean on Monday and then have another group on Tuesday and then that. So we're planning on deep cleaning on Wednesday. And for the little ones, two days in a row is better than, than broken up like Monday. And then by Thursdays, our, some of them may forget the concepts that we're trying to reinforce.
That sounds great. I, yeah, I would have never thought of that. I would have went Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday. That's, I am not a teacher, I'm sure. So I appreciate, thanks for letting me know that.
Scott, it also allows us to do, on those three days that students aren't in class, if they're in a hybrid model, it allows us to do tutoring or offer support on those Wednesday, Thursday. So say a kid goes Monday, Tuesday, on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, we can engage them in tutoring or some onsite. Or clubs, athletics, things like that. And so we're not writing those days off. We're just saying that Wednesday would be a deep clean day and then on the other day, we, you know, try and engage them.
No, I think it makes great sense. And the thing, we just got to be as consistent so we can let parents, these are the days you're going to need, you're going to need babysitters or, or help. And these are the days you're not, and not changing it up. But I would have never thought of that. I, I thought, you know, Monday, Thursday makes a lot more sense. But, but after I think about it, I think that's a, that's a great idea. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, I have a question. Scotty, at the bottom of that slide on your side there, K2, elementary three, five model. Is it the intervention in small groups is six students? And is it, is it only the? Do the six students apply only to intervention in small group, not to the class? It's not one teacher to six kids. It's only limited one to six in the intervention in small group? Is that my understanding?
In, in phase three, my understanding of three, five is that it's one teacher and three, three to five groups or three to six small groups in person. This is in person.
I can jump in here too and, and talk a little. So I'm Brian Bailey, High School Principal. And what we're referring to is the small cohort model. So while K2 is, is engaged in the 50/50 model, they have more of an opportunity because of the, the environment in which they learn that they can, they can keep all of their kids contained in one classroom. As we move into the secondary education, we obviously move classroom to classroom with our students to get the content area specialists. And so as we are, you know, stepping into this and staging a return, grades three through 12 would then be in a small cohort model, meaning that the one teacher would be in their classroom. While, Chris referenced three, we're suggesting six, while six students are also present in their classroom to receive support such as a teacher in the room. They, they are continuing their online learning while that teacher is present. They have an adult present in the room to offer them support when possible, to offer them, you know, the emotional and, and social support that they need to see other people and see other students. They have perhaps a quiet place to work and to get outside the, the home, perhaps, if that is what is best for them to come back to the school and work in an environment that they are used to performing their schoolwork in. And so this provides them with also a, a, you know, a confined room that they don't have to move around in, but still offer support from an adult.
Okay. And in addition to that, this is Rick Follett, the District CTE Director. This is the opportunity for us to start bringing in not only the CTE kids, but other clubs and organizations to come in. The students could come in and, and get enrichment from a teacher. They could come in and get additional help if they're struggling with teachers. The teachers would have the possib- possibility of having an alternate assignment. So you could either do the online assignment or you could come in during the office hours in the afternoon and do the assignment. And to ensure safety, we're going to continue to have the students start doing the attestations like they're doing with athletics. And then have the teachers, we'll have a list of the students who are coming in and then they'll be able to have the thermal scanners to scan them as they come into the room. We have a little bit of variance with that. We can, depending on which class or teacher as far as the size, because obviously you could have more students within a, a shop classroom or within a shop than you could have within a classroom. But once again, it would give students the opportunity to work on projects. It would give clubs the opportunity to, to work and meet and start practicing. And this would be the, our, our first phase of getting, get, getting more students on campus. Are there any questions?
Well, I just want to add on to what Rick said real quick before questions. I want to be clear that the small cohort model to begin with in step three would be bringing these, bringing our highest need students back in the AM. And what we're referencing with Rick and Rick's comments are bringing in other students that aren't necessarily in that highest need group. We still want to provide our other students that may be successful in this environment. They may be successful online. We still want to provide them with an opportunity to come in in the afternoon. And we feel like we can do that, you know, through, in, in the afternoon, through this voluntary system where they come in and work in labs. And, you know, whatever lab it might be, riding lab, woodworking, that type of stuff. And so we're excited about that opportunity. So with that, I will now open it up to you guys to ask questions.
Just so I'm clear. Brian and this is more. We're talking in the K2 model, the 50 model, they would go to school all day like they used to. It's the small cohort model where they only go in the hay. Is that correct?
So no, that's not, it's, 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 they'll go to school, they'll have opportunities for education all day. So, but in the morning, they would be in person or virtual. And in the afternoon, there might be some small group work, interventions, specialists, things like that. So they have educational opportunities all day. 50% of those who want to come to the hybrid model will have it in the morning. And the next slide goes into more detail about what step three looks like. So.
So the kids are at school all day?
They're in person half day. They're in school all day.
So, and I, I would jump in there that the plan. So, and I, I would jump in there that the plan is in step three to have kids there at the school in the morning. With the bus routes possibly, the bus routes running on a half day schedule. The afternoon schedule would be on a voluntary basis where students can come in on their own and, and complete that, that work on their own. So we're talking, step three, we're talking about a half day, a half day only really. On campus.
Okay. Any other questions from the board on this?
On the, on the six kids. Go ahead.
Yeah, why not a full day?
So that we want to stage this in. And so in our efforts to try and minimize the contacts with, with. Student to student and student to teacher, we felt like it was an opportunity for us to stage this in. Not only with the number of students on campus and in person, but also with the time of students on campus. So they're currently in an online system where they perform all of their classes in a half day setting. We wanted to maintain that structure. By providing that with them in this model as well. And then move toward building up to, not only are we building up to more students, but we're also building up to more time. And reestablishing that stamina that it takes to learn in a, in a full day. And so. If anybody wants to add.
And Scott, this, this model also gives us the opportunity to start bringing in CTE kids to start working in the shops, working on. On projects and working with their clubs and organizations also. Where if we went all day, the teachers under this model with the high needs kids might not be able to, to meet with those kids.
Okay, well, again, I'm just thinking out here, but to me, it makes sense. If you got them in there, let's get them in there and let's keep them there. The fact that they're there for four hours or eight hours or three and a half and seven hours. They're not anymore susceptible, in my opinion, to getting something or, or passing something along. They're already there. So. To me, it would make more sense to just get the kids in there, get them. Doing what they do and, and the teachers are there and can. Half a day, half a day just seems like an awful short amount of time by the time we get done messing around and doing. Attendance and, you know, kids getting squarely and settling down and all that kind of stuff. We, we end up with. With two hours instead of three and a half, four hours. And then if we can get them in there doing their thing, I, I just, to me, it, it is. And again, I, again, I'm just a layperson out here. That guy, I, I'm a four tens guy instead of a five eights guy. So I would much rather. I get my employees in working for a good ten hours a day. It cuts down on, gets down on issues, sick. Vacation days. It cuts down on, it cuts down on people that want to leave early because they know that they have to be there for those two days. World. I think that I understand where you guys are going with it, but for, for me. When we don't have to have the lights on and the, and the water running and all those other things for those days and the bus drivers and all that kind of stuff. We got them there, we might as well, we might as well. Make the most of that day while they're there. So that may not work.
I can go ahead and I can, I'll just share some of the considerations that we took into account when, when starting with a half day. And, and doesn't mean that that is the only option. And some districts are doing full day. But with the high case counts at this time, the longer the time the kids are at school, the more exchanges with people or movement that'll need to happen. So meals, you know, maybe breakfast and lunch. It would be really, a really long, hard day to not have kids out at recess or having some sort of break. So there's a lot of other structures that have to be in place and not that that's not possible. But with a really high case counts right now, the, the more time they're there, the more opportunity, the more times we will have to like interchange with different people. And so it just brings about more risk. It's, and like I said, it's not that it's not possible, but those are some of the considerations we took into account with the half day.
So Scott, this is, well, this is Gilman, the principal at Witstran. And one of the things that we looked at is we still have kids that are online. There, that are asking to stay at home. And an all day schedule might be somewhat difficult when you're doing some simultaneous learning. For those kids to be on that screen for that amount of time. And we're not saying that it's not possible, but it's one of the considerations that we looked at were also the kids that were at, at home or continuing virtual.
This is Peggy here, and I just want to say, I. I really have to agree with some of the things that Scott has been saying. We have kids that it's been almost a year now have not been in school and they are struggling. What we've been doing, it feels like it's kind of just. Skimming across the bare minimum for a lot of these kids. Not all of them. Some of them are getting it. But there's a lot of students out there that are on the verge of just giving up. And. We have to get them back, get them engaged. And I especially that, you know, the middle school through high school are the, the ages that. I most worry about. Yeah, I would, I would. I know it's going to be difficult. I agree with what Kevin said that there's, you know, some kids that are doing distance learning, some kids that are not doing it. There's, you know, how do you get them with music? How do you move them around for lunch? But, you know, we just have to think outside of the box and. Figure out a way to get these kids back in school and engaged has to be safe. But I think we just need to be looking at. It needs to be more aggressive on how we are thinking on getting these kids back in school. I know Prosser is different than every other district. They all are, but I look around and I see a lot of our districts. Making it work. Doesn't work for all of the kids, but it, and for all the staff, but they're making it work. And. Yeah, I just think we've got too many kids that are at risk right now. They've lost almost a year of education and we cannot keep postponing it. Online has been an option for us that we needed to follow, but we need to get these kids back in school. They need to be back in the classroom. That's all I wanted to say.
And I, I don't discount Kevin and Rick and everybody. I don't discount what you're saying. It's just, this is just food for thought and that kind of stuff. I. I truly lean on you guys because you're the experts, but for me, it's easier just to go in like a hundred miles an hour and then let's pull back. Let's blitz every play, Kevin. Let's blitz every play and then we can pull back. And if it, if it doesn't. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but let's get in there. Let's knock it out and it's, let's make that quarterback scared every single time. And that's what this disease is. And then let's pull back. If, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. That's, that's fine. But it's, to me, it's a whole lot easier to just. Go gangbusters than it is the, to just kind of slide into it. And then all of a sudden, we're going to just hit it. Let's, let's hit it right now. I throw that out there to you because I'm trying to, trying to relate to you because you know, me and you are defense guys. We're linebacker guys. So let's, that to me, that's, that's where we're at. Let's, let's go whole hog. Let's knock it out. Let's get the teachers ready for that. And then if we have to pull back, let's pull back. So anyway, it's my feeling.
We, we considered that. In fact, we were talking about an all or nothing approach. And we've had, you know, one of the reasons why we've been slow and methodical. Has been to observe other systems and, and listen to other systems. One of the things that they said is that particularly at the high school level. You know, maybe not so much middle school, but high school, when you start introducing students, you'll be shutting back down within due time. Because of the close contacts, because of the different people that come down with it. And so. By, by transitioning and doing kind of a gradual induction, we feel like our odds of, you know, building that out. Without having to shut down are, are good. So what, what we don't want to do is to say, we're going to open it back up. And then three days later, say, we're calling it off. We're back to square one again. And so. That, that was part of the consideration because that's what, you know, in, in my mind, is it better, is it all or nothing? You know, can we go everybody at the same time? Or, you know, how, how do we operate this?
And man, I'm not, man, I'm not saying, I didn't mean to catch you off. I'm not all or nothing. I'm just saying, there, there's a, there's a happy medium. Let's, let's, let's do a happy medium. I'm, I'm all about, let's get in there and let's get this knocked out. And if, and if not, we can pull back. But if we don't try it, we don't try it. And I, I know that's a philosophical, that's a big word for, for this guy. But a philosophical word. Is, is, is that if we don't try it, we won't know. And if we don't know, we'll never get there. And, and that's, that's just two different people's opinion. And you're, you're running the district. I totally get that. Totally do. But it, in the end, to me, we do it, we get in there. You know, all or nothing doesn't mean we got kids in there five days a week, eight hours a day. They never did that anyway. Let's, let's get half the kids in there for two hours, you know, two, two days a week. Let's, let's abbreviate this and let's. Let's get in there. And, and I understand, I don't want to pull back either, but I would much rather we dove in there and started at it. And then, and then abbreviate from there than, and stick our toe in the water and just kind of noodle it, noodle it, noodle it. And then, and then. You know, wait for it to happen. I don't care about other districts. I care about pros kids and so do you. I care about pros or teachers and so do you. That from my perspective, and I'm the one that's talking the most, I'm from my perspective, I just, let's get after it and let's get in there and. And, and I know there's a lot of other things on the table, teachers and paras and all the union crap that goes along with it. For me, it's, it's, let's get the kids in there. And if we got them there, we might as well, we might as well get them educated while they're there for four, five, six hours. And then get them home. So that's my opinion.
Scotty, I would, I, I mean, we can do whatever you want, but I, I would suggest that we continue with the information. Because I think it would answer some of the ideas and some of the, the things that are in here, I think would answer some people, questions that people have. But also give the board some ideas of some of the, the things that we have talked about and why. So I, I, we have, I would suggest we kind of continue through. I don't think it'll take us a really long time. And, and we may, I don't, we can ask questions as we go, or we can ask them at the end. And then I also have some community questions. I know that are, that I would, we would like to share answers to. So I would say whether we go in a full day or whether we go in a half day, many of these things pertain. So I, I'm, we're at your, I mean, whatever you, how you'd like us to proceed.
Okay. I know we have seventeen slides of this, this plan to go through. But I'm not going to cut the board members off if they have questions that they need answers as they're trying to understand it. So. The board members, as you have questions, if you needed answered there, ask it. If it's something that could be answered or asked at the end more globally, if we want to ask questions. Or save them up and ask them there, we can. But if you have a question as we're moving through it and you need it explained or to comment on it. We're going to do that. I, I want to give them a chance. We've, we've kind of been on pause for a few months of. Waiting to understand how this plan was going to work. And tonight is our night to get some answers. So we're going to ask them as we go through it.
Whatever works.
I know it might take a little while with seventeen slides, but we'll get through it.
I'm sure we will.
I don't have anywhere else to.
Scotty, I got a fair amount of questions myself, but I've read through it a few times. So I can wait till the end. It's not a big deal for me.
We're ready to go, Deanna.
Sure. So I think we're on slide seven with Mr. Gilman.
So again, Kevin Gillen, the principal at Witstran Elementary School. And, and again, this is phase three or step three of that continued. K two fifty fifty hybrid model with the instruction in, in person instruction in the AM. Mondays and Tuesdays, Group A. We've kind of covered that. Thursday, Friday, Group B. And the PM would be the small groups. We tried to get the interventions. Also with the virtual kids that are at home. So if you look at, think about an AM in-person model, there are a couple different options that could be academically, we could go with. To address the needs of the kids. One of them is, is based on the technology to be able to do that simultaneously. And another one is to address the in-person students in the AM and then. The virtual students in the PM. But again, to really hit both populations, that's really kind of what we thought about in this model is how to address both populations. So that we can address them in smaller groups. And, and still have that live opportunity with the teacher either at your, in the virtual format or in the in-person format. The students. That are still in distance learning would continue in the distance learning for the parents that choose that. We would like to do a phase in approach with kindergarten students to start in the first week. And the reason why we started thinking about that is we have kindergarten students that actually haven't come to school yet. In a typical school year, they have conferences that first week while the rest of the school comes back. And then we gradually introduce them into the school setting. We would like to do that here with the kindergarten kids, just because of all the new protocols that we have in place at the building level. To get them introduced to that routine and down to that and. Get them comfortable with that, that schedule of going back into school. What does it look like now to go back into school? How do we sanitize? How do we wash hands? Things like that. How do we wear a mask? And we felt like with the, with the younger kids being able to focus staff and resources. To them as they transition into this. It would be easier for them long term than just to have them all show up and then resources be spread throughout the building. And so that's why we tried to, to really think of those individuals, gray levels coming back and how we could. Support them with the resources that we have.
Next slide eight if is Jody and Michael.
My name is Jody Saban. I'm the principal at elementary school. So while the K two will be doing a fifty fifty model, the three, five will be doing more of a small cohort. And so we would be still bringing in kids, but it would be a smaller group and more of the, not to take Michael's part of his slide, but more of the. Based on need and the farthest from educational justice. And so we would still be doing that group A, Monday, Tuesday, Group B. Thursday, Friday. So just to give you an idea of the number, so for heights. When we start this, we would have eighty eight kids coming back roughly. Just to kind of give you that idea of how many of our kids would be coming back if, when we use this model.
And I'm Michael, then I'm the principal at Housen Middle School. And I'll talk, and we've already kind of talked about it a little bit, the six, twelve. Proposal. Students would be, we'd start off with students group of six at a time in a classroom. Some of this comes from not only Governor Inslee's proposal, but the Department of Health. Set out a new updated guidelines on December sixteenth. And on page two and page six, it talks in a little bit of detail about using cohorts. That a cohort would be a group of students with a teacher and they would not intermix or intermingle with other students or other classes. As a way to minimize the potential. Opportunity to spread throughout a building. And so that's what we focused on based off of the most recent recommendations. So. For six, twelve, a teacher would have a class. There would be six students in there. They would be working online throughout the day. We would work the plan to have, just like in our Slavator or advisory class. Those students in that class would have that teacher at some point during the schedule. So when that happened, they could be teaching to that student or group of students live, but otherwise the teacher would also be broadcasting. And teaching to the students that are remote as well. If we were to start with six students in our class with the twenty seven teachers that indicated they're ready to return, that'd be over a hundred and sixty five students. Quickly, as we run up through that. You know, that you can see that the, the numbers could increase with each step. And that's actually, I'm jumping ahead a little bit. As Jody talked about, you know, when we. As Jody talked about, um, you know, when we presented, Brian and I presented the, um, the, um, students that were struggling back. I believe it was in a December board meeting and we identified those students that, um, students with disabilities, uh, students that are migrant, students that are homeless, um, students that, um, are bilingual. Maybe we have some students that, um, have technology to the, that doesn't work. Um, other things that get in the way of their educational performance. So, uh, Crystal and I have been working to, um, prioritize those students and create that list so that we can begin, um, offering that up once we're, I'm ready to bring students back and get those students into classes. I think we're ready to jump on to the next slide of possible listeners' questions.
Mike, where, I'm sorry, you referenced, uh, the Department of Health guidelines at the beginning of your talk there. Yes, referring to?
So it was, um, it's a Department of Health model. It, it, yeah, it's the small cohort model or using a cohort model. And it's under, uh, key principles for reducing potential exposure and using cohorts as one of them. And then on page six, where it talks about reducing transmissions, there's a subsection, um, that talks about how to group students. And they, um, and I, and I don't want to, you know, to consult anybody here, but I'll just read just the first part of the paragraph. Create cohorts or groups of students with dedicated staff who remain together throughout the day at recess lunchtime. Uh, these groups should remain consistent from day to day and should not be combined or mixed. Staying in small groups limits the amount of contact between individuals, reducing the mixing of students, teachers and staff through groups. And then it goes into, to more than that. But that's, um, kind of the key premise behind it is we create cohorts of students that, um, they kind of become their, um, their own, um, homeroom, if you will. And that, um, addresses multiple pieces. One, it helps with the limiting of the transmission, um, from student to student. But it also creates, um, and some of the, the research we've been doing, it creates a social emotional, uh, uh, I hate to say bond, but a bond between students. And so a lot of those issues that might come up, um, support between peers, building groups, partnerships, um, it allows for that as well. Where they might not feel comfortable speaking in a large class with thirty other students. Uh, they might be more willing to ask questions and seek help in, in smaller groups of, um, six or, or nine or whatever it might be. So, uh, but that, yeah, that was in the December sixteenth, K twelve schools, twenty twenty-one, um, guidance from the Department of Health.
Could you explain to me real quick what educational justice is?
Uh, I guess you could say, um, students that are farthest from educational justice, um, would be those students that have the most factors that could interfere with their, um, with their, uh, potential to, uh, learn given instructions. So, um, you know, a student with a disability, um, who has difficulty, uh, reading, working online all day, doesn't have somebody there to support them, uh, versus a student who's at grade level. Um, there's the student with a disability that doesn't have those supports that they require, uh, through their plan. And the recommendations, um, would be further from educational justice than the student that, um, does not require those supports. Social, uh, or a socioeconomic status might be one. You know, a student who has multiple wifi, um, hotspots and multiple computers in their house and doesn't have any technology issues versus a student who, um, has one device, um, and they're living in a, uh, area that doesn't allow them to, um, receive, uh, quality wifi. That would be a factor that would create, uh, uh, educational injustice there. So it's kind of talking about, um, balancing the has and the has nots as far as the supports and, and, uh, services that are available to students.
I just want to jump you for a second and add to that and say that this isn't necessarily a student that is failing all of their classes. This could be a student that was formerly a straight A student and now is achieving these. Um, you know, so that, that would play into it as well. It's not necessarily all, all failures.
Mr. Ellis, is there any clarification on the definition of, um, educational justice that you could help us with?
Oh, I would, I would say that it could be an amalgam of, um, uh, I, I think life experiences or situations that, um, the, the student didn't necessarily ask for or isn't a part of changing. And, um, basically a system's, um, uh, a system's failure to serve those students or identify them and assist them, um, in ways that can make a difference in their academic life and in their, um, in their, uh, social or home life as well. It has, when we talk about it, it's, uh, basically we're talking about equity issues. And, um, they, you know, the, the underlying question is who do we serve and how do we serve them? Different students have different needs. So some of those are service needs, some of those are, um, uh, you know, academic needs. Some of those are lunch, uh, food, food needs. Some of those are counseling needs or mental health needs. So, yeah, it can, it can be, like I said, a mix of different things.
Thank you. Andy, does that help answer your question? Go ahead, Deanna.
Okay.
Like we're.
I think I would just, um, one quick add on to that. It, the, the students for this from educational justice is kind of a new educational jargon. It's a new term. Um, I think that Matt and, and Michael did a really good job explaining it, but it is something probably you maybe haven't heard before, Andy. Michael, I think you're still going.
I am. Yeah. If we could go to slide nine. So step four, um, that's where, you know, we're looking at, uh, the transmission rates, um, our ability to provide a safe, um, environment for our students and staff. As we've identified, um, these steps, when we move from step three to step four, it's an increase in the number of students, um, that we would have on campus. So, uh, K five would move into a fifty fifty cohort model from the, um, small cohort model. So they would, um, fall on the same, uh, pathway as, uh, K two was in step three. Um, and then six twelve, we would look to increase the number of students in those classes. And just to give you an idea of the number of, of students that would, would, uh, increase with that from a move from one to six to one to nine in a class. When we're at six students with twenty-seven teachers, it'd be a hundred and sixty-two. When we move to nine students for the twenty-seven teachers, it becomes two hundred and forty-three students on campus. When you move up to twelve, it becomes three hundred and forty-two. Um, and so, uh, the, the middle school, and I, I don't have the numbers for the rest of the buildings and they can chime in if, if, if needed. But, uh, we have six hundred and twenty students and thirty percent have said that they, um, uh, the family would like for those students to continue to receive their instruction, um, online. So we would be looking to get back to, um, our four hundred and thirty-four students that said that they want to come into class. And, uh, when we get to that fifteen, sixteen number, um, that's pretty much all the students that have said that they would like to be, uh, considered for in-person, um, hybrid model. So, um, you know, as we move through those steps and it goes from one to six to one to nine to one to twelve, uh, we begin to get closer to, um, you know, what we've been talking about, about all students, uh, back on campus for, for at least us at the middle school.
Our next slide is Brian.
Move from slide ten. We're on slide ten, Deanna.
Yes.
Just as last, last one moved, uh, so all K five was together. Uh, the increase from step four to step five would now be bringing secondary back into that, uh, rotation, uh, on a regular bell schedule, um, with a fifty fifty cohort model. Uh, so now you would have everybody in the district on that fifty fifty model from step four to step five. Based on the traditional schedules, uh, this is still an AM model at this point. I believe the next one then transitions to a full day.
Um, the next slides, eleven and twelve are Rick.
Okay, this is Rick followed again, the district CT director. So I actually have the opportunity to present the light at the end of the tunnel. So this, this is, we're going to see a continued decrease in rates. And we're going to transition, we're going to still keep the two AA, the A and B cohorts. But now they're going to start going to school all day for the two days that they're here. And once again, the reason for that, that's following guidance. And as they're together longer, we're increasing, we're increasing, um, the amount of exposure. But that leads me into, so as that, as, as that decreases and under current guidance, if, if we can get to a case rate of less than fifty, then at that point, we can bring all kids to school in all buildings for, for the whole day. Of course, there's probably, there's always going to be the, the masking and some, some social distancing things that are going to have to be considered initially. But this is at the point where we, we start to get back to what we remember as normal.
I think that was probably slide seven. He gave you an early preview on slide seven.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so I have the next few slides. This is Deanna Flores again. Just some, Amy, Amy talked some about some of these things, but we would be transporting students and meals throughout this, this process. So, um, we would transport students when they were at school. They might be taking meals home on the days that they're there. And then, um, to make sure they cover their five days of meals, we, uh, in talking with Darlene, um, and Amy, there's, you know, a lot of considerations that they do a lot of coordination to make all this happen. We would still need monitors on all of the buses because the drivers cannot distribute meals if kids are carrying meals home for the days that they're off. So we would, you have to use some of our, continue to use some of our staff to monitor, be monitors to help distribute the meals. And really, uh, what Amy said, and I, I, I know what, um, board member Coleman said about like, just go on those same routes. Well, a couple of things and maybe, and, and maybe we've gotten back to our level of staffing before the closure, but we have lost some drivers and Amy has had to change some routes. And then, um, as Matt said, we have to take into consideration where we're transporting them, how far, um, because of funding. So she, Amy really asked for like the list of students if, when a plan is a, um, is set in motion and, and the, the principals have worked very diligently on their lists, um, and really have them ready. But we have to know what model we're in to give Amy exactly who's coming to school so that she can build those, um, transportation, uh, plans. Amy, is there anything you want to add to that?
Um, I already have K R V's list of students that are going. So we have those inputted into our system. Um, and because we have kept all the student information from Skyward updated and bus spots, it actually went a lot quicker than what we thought it would to get the routes updated with the students going each day. So I think we'd be able to start faster.
Okay, that's great. That's great news. Thank you.
And I'd like to add, Deanna, this is Chris from the school K R V. It took a while to get the transportation for us because it's something we used to do when, um, in our kindergarten conferences with parents and explain it to them. Since we didn't have transportation needs at the beginning of school, it, it took us a while to call every parent and to email every kindergarten parent to explain the transportation and how they get to addresses. Because some of times they get picked up at their home, but they get delivered to a daycare at, after school. So that's something that every school is, is working towards right now. And I know that, like Amy said, K R V did as much as we could and we gave her everyone that we had so far. So.
Thank you, Chris. We'll go ahead and go to food service considerations. If we're in half days, the students would be eating all their meals at home, breakfast before they come to school and lunch when they arrive at home. Then meals would be transported home with students, um, on the days they attend school. So one day they might take home two meals and another day they'll take home three meals. So they have their five meals for the week. And then those students that have chosen to be in distance learning would, would order their five meal boxes from Darlene. And we would most likely deliver those on Wednesdays when we don't have students attending school. And then, uh, for now, we would have to continue with grab and go because we would have students in town who, um, would need to still come and pick up meals at the, at the middle school or at, um, K R V. When, um, where, if we were in full days, then students would be eating meals at, at school. And then they would take home meals for the threes they weren't in school. And we would continue the, the, the five meal boxes, five day meal boxes for those kids that are not attending or continuing to be in distance learning. Um, and we would continue grab and go until the point we had all the students back in school. Darlene, did I miss anything?
No, thank you, Deanne.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead and go on to the safety protocols. We have included one of the building's, um, ha, uh, safety protocol book, handbooks in the board packet. All of the principals have built their safety protocol handbooks off of the same template. Um, I know that Kevin Gilman put a lot of, uh, work into that and the principals will put a lot of work into, uh, uh, they have to be detailed to their buildings because each building has a different scenario for entering the school, um, some different protocols. Older kids might have some, some different guidelines than the younger students. So, um, I, I'm, I'm not going to go through and read it. I mean, we could go through it part by part if you would like to, or have Jody explain kind of how it's going to work. But we have, um, really clear protocols for attestations for how students are, our parents are declaring that students are healthy to attend school. Even with that, they will still be screened, um, their temperature will be screened when they come into school to ensure that they don't have a temperature coming into school. Um, we have specific, uh, ways that students come into school and the way students leave school and to get onto buses or if they're walking or, um, perhaps being picked up by parents. There are protocols for how meals are, it wants meals are being eaten at school because students would have to take off masks. So there has to be appropriate social distancing for any eating at school. Um, recesses, mask breaks for students to be able to take a mask break and they want to take that mask off and just get some plain old fresh air. All of our P P E guidelines for staff and students, um, our physical distancing rules. I mean, there's so much, there's so many things in the book and they are a work in progress. Because once we get kids into school, we may find that something needs to be adjusted or changed to make sure that we're ensuring student safety. Jody or any of the principals that have comments on the safety protocols or, or questions from the board?
I read through it. Um, I'm not sure who worked on it. It looks like it's from Jody's school. This is awesome. Um, you guys put a lot of work into it and there's a lot of information in here that I had been wondering about how we were going to do these things as we went along. And you've answered almost all of my questions. So, um, this, this is a great document and I think that it'll be helpful to parents to see, um, how this process will work. One of the things I was thinking about this afternoon, and maybe you guys are already thinking about it, is could we do like pre-back-to-school videos? So when the kid, that we can share with the parents, here's, here's how we drop the kids off. Here's where we park, here's how they get into the school. Those kinds of videos to show them what it's going to look like when they get there. And I, I think Chris and maybe Kevin mentioned that in like kindergarten, those kids have never been to school. So maybe we can show them what their school's going to look like before they get there. Jody, you were going to.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, yeah. First I wanted to say that Kevin did a great job. Like I just stole Kevin's, so I wanted to give Kevin that, we knew that Kevin really, he did a great job on that. But we all, Chris, Kevin and I, all of the elementary principals have already talked about doing some videos. I know I talked to my friend who has done, um, who's done some of my videos for my school and she's totally on board. I even had my security guard was like, okay, this is one of our videos. So I, I just, um, I want to make sure that, yeah, the board and the community are aware that we're going to do some videos and really show them how we want things done, like especially drop off and, um, pick up, pick up. Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to share, Scotty, that we feel like this is communication to our families and our parents and our students even, even preparing our students right now during class meetings, being able to show them those videos because they come to us prior to a starting is a great idea to help our students too. And we know that these protocols have to be in English and in Spanish. And as soon as we give the go-ahead, we want to do that too. And then put it on our website, send it to parents, do a huge, um, media blitz. So.
And we already have the movie stars, Jody Saban and Brian Bailey are our current movie stars that do a lot of videos. And so they'll help the rest of us make sure that we have good videos for people to understand. They're very helpful. It's a short way. You don't have to do a lot of reading, just can listen and watch. So it's a great way to share that information. Um, go ahead and say that. On the P S, uh, reopening, go ahead. Uh, there's someone, some noise. I'm having a little bit of a hard time. I don't know. Thank you so much.
If you have your microphone on, please turn it off.
Thank you so much. Um, we have a PSD reopening checklist and the principals, um, and Matt really worked on this. Um, the other, uh, I've been working on this all along, but kind of formalized it in one big document. The other have been working on this all along, kind of formalized it in one big document. And everything's being worked on simultaneously. Some of it is done, some of it is in process, some we started at where we're finishing. Some of it can't be finished until we know exactly what type of plan we're in. So this covers attestations, the P P E, the classroom preparations. The building preparations, communication, transportation, food services and custodial. So we're trying to cover all our bases and there will always be something come up that will probably add to the list as we think of things that maybe we hadn't thought of before. So you can see, I would say some of these Xs, this was done last on Monday. Or finalized on Monday, but I would say there's already some Xs that are maybe are moving to the left as we continue to work on the work on the plans. I don't know if principals have any anything on that or questions for anybody? Okay. So I I know there might be more questions. I do have right now four questions that came a community member sent in earlier. So I don't know if you're gonna do board questions than those or how you'd like to do that, Scotty?
Actually, Deanna, it's we're two hours into this. I'd like to recess for five minutes.
Yeah.
And everybody stay right here. Just turn your stuff off. We're gonna take a five minute recess and then we'll come right back here. So don't don't leave the meeting. Just stay right here. And it'll take five minutes. We'll be back in nine oh seven. All right. It's nine oh seven. Mr. Coleman. Are you back? Jess?
I am back.
Okay.
I'm back also.
All right. We'll resume our meeting.
Um, so my my I have four four questions that were submitted before the board meeting. We can respond to or we can go to board questions, whichever you choose.
Let's start with your community questions and then we'll move on to the board.
Okay, the first community question was will I have to switch teachers? In in the current plan, our goal is to keep students with their teacher. So that ultimately is is what we're working towards, students being with their teacher. At the secondary, they would be with one of their teachers in person and then the others they would stay with online. So that's question number one. The second question was, will kids have to watch live video of their teachers? Yes, they will. Will the live.
In what setting? Would that be the I'm sorry, is that the in what setting are they referring to watching live video?
They, I I'm not I.
Is this in the hybrid models?
I I it they I'm not sure. But I would say that it no matter whether they're in person or they're at home, there will be live video time with with their teacher. Because if they're on their A A schedule. Elementary and kindergarten, when they're home on the other days, they will watch, they will be having live video interaction with their teacher. If they are in the small cohort model, they will be in person. On say some days, but they will still have live video with their teacher on the days they're not there, including on Wednesdays. So no matter what, they would have at least some. Will the live meeting times change? There will be some adjustments to time schedules until we determine the the model that we're in. I can't say exactly what they would be, but for example. In the if say it was middle school and they normally are with three teachers in the morning time. They probably would still be with three teachers, but we have to adjust for the times when school would be starting for in person. So there will be some adjustments. And then, of course, it would be some possible changes or adjustments to small groups and interventions in the afternoon when students might have maybe previously went in the more attended in the morning. So principals, is there anything else you would add to that?
I would say that the class meetings right now are condensed version of direct instruction. We've been using async videos a lot. And in in a hybrid or even in a virtual setting. Where we're, our goal is to put the teacher with the student in a direct instruction model. So that they could be watching the student and interacting on a continuous basis. And so that's the difference that there will be.
Thank you, Chris.
I'm I have a question on that. Sean, does that change our need for bandwidth any or or any kind of lag time? If there's it, Chris, would this increase our video time in that model? Yes, okay, so from the technology department, Sean, would that impact anything that we're we have through our technology infrastructure, either good or bad?
Definitely going to impact it. There's no getting around that. Are we gonna be okay? I think so. I'm I'm fairly confident we're gonna be okay. We might still have to make some adjustments as we go. We'll just have to start and see how it goes though.
We do have times right now where basically our whole district is online at the same time. If every student was there. So that does happen. But not to the magnitude that this would. It wouldn't be as much a length of time that we're doing that now. So.
Actually, Deanna, there will be less because the kids that are in person. They don't, they will have their teachers, they won't be online at that time. They will be in person with their teacher, hopefully in front of them. And so there will be less people on the computer at a certain time than there is now.
There you go. Yeah, that's a good point.
So one piece on the technology and Sean could probably speak to this is that where cameras were ordered and they're on backorder. And those would provide the capability for our teachers to be simultaneous. So if they were giving that instruction in person that the students at home would also be able to get that same instruction live. And to be able to interact with the whole class. So right now they're using the camera that's on the laptop for them for the most part to interact with those students. But these additional cameras would help us to the students at home or who are virtual to see the whole classroom and to interact with the teacher.
And Deanna, I want to expand on what Kevin just said. Once we get to that fifty 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 A A B B schedule, it's going to be live teaching. So so the students that are in class are getting the same instruction as the kids that are online that day. So maybe that will answer the question that the person had.
Thank you. The last question that I have is what does continuing online look like? And I think this is talking like if a student stayed online all the time and did not attend school in person. And I'm gonna ask Kevin and Michael, I think some of that's already been answered, but I'll ask them if there's anything that how they'd want to respond to that for students that are at home.
And so like I I said before, once we have the technology to be able to stream that live. The instruction will be slightly different than what they're receiving now. So they'll be receiving the the live instruction. Many lessons and so on. And there there might be some discussion and discourse that happens through that. And then their small group time might be at a different time where the teacher is able to address the virtual students. And also our staff and our resources will be able to address the the students that are working virtually. So the schedule will be slight slightly different. And for all students, there there will still be some work because they're not in person. Five days a week at that point. There will also be some work still through Canvas.
And this is Michael from the middle school again. At the middle school, we've been teaching live for our forty five and now fifty minute period. So not a lot of change in that sense. The difference would be we would have kids in person and then we would have to really work to make sure we're integrating the students that are online or remote with the students that are in person. And and really make sure that both both of those groups of students are included and integrated in all the work that we do. And you know, some of the platforms teams has come out with some great opportunities for small groups. And where they can break out and do that, whether they're in person or virtual. So a lot of opportunities to engage everybody, even if half of the students are at home and half of the students are in the classroom.
So those were the four questions that I had. Our plan is to build an F A Q document that where we respond to questions that come up. And we'll, we're gonna post that on the website. I'm gonna work on that and hope to have that posted. Probably the beginning of next week, right? And I'm sure there will be plenty more questions that come up in the in the meantime.
And that'll be translated into Spanish. So we get that out to all of our community. Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's it for Deanna, for your reopening plan presentation, correct? Now we have some, let's let's open it up to the board members. If you have questions that you haven't asked yet or need clarification on something you've already asked. Kind of identify who you're asking it to and and take it away.
Deanna, this is Andy. Have our classrooms been measured yet so we know how many kids we can actually put in it safely, square footage, you know?
Yeah.
Keeping them all distance.
Yeah, the print, the buildings I've worked on have worked on that for quite a while. So yes, they not just the classrooms, but they have to take into consideration any space that they would use. And how what the the capacity of that room could be. And we have some buildings like the elementary Wood Strand. Chris's building, most of the classrooms are quite large and would easily hold our easily hold our elementary numbers in fifty fifty, that wouldn't be an issue. Other than maybe dealing with some of the maybe some things in the classroom that need to be removed and they've had teachers doing that. It is some of it is a bigger issue at the high school, especially in the old part of the high school. Because some of the rooms in the old portion of the high school are in the seven hundred and fifty square feet range versus nine hundred to eleven hundred square feet in an elementary. And we have more students in those classes than we have in like an elementary K three class. So there are some challenges in some of the classrooms for sure at the high school because we can't fit us, we can't fit. There isn't enough room for for maybe half in those rooms. So that's a little bit bigger challenge. Yeah.
What what would the plan be if we had classes that were too big to go fifty fifty in one room?
They'd have to adjust, they'd have to adjust to a different space. So your your options are, you know, looking at like what classes are scheduled that periods and teachers might have to change rooms. You might have to use other spaces like the stage or part of a gym to space the kids out. We do have a percentage of students who have and parents who have indicated their kids are not gonna return. They're gonna stay online and distance learning for the remainder of the year. And depending on the building, that's maybe twenty percent, maybe twenty five percent of the kids. So that does bring the numbers down for in person to where most spaces you could reasonably do half. There just might be a few classes at the high school that might be a challenge. Brian could probably talk. I'm not, I don't think it's so much of an issue with the other buildings is it might be for some some classes there.
Well, I'm not near as worried about the high school at this point, but and actually that led into my third question was I assume there's been a pretty solid survey or at least a pretty good grasp of how many plan to come back and don't?
Yes, every building has their list. And that we had a parents turn in information and that's right, every every student who didn't parent that didn't respond, they were called to get an answer. We do still have some parents that are unsure based on until they have, they see the plan. Once they see the plan and seeing the safety protocols, it's more about safety protocols. I think seeing the safety protocols, then that's what they want to base their decision on because they felt unsure when they didn't know. So those numbers might those some of those minds change.
I assume you guys plan to make arrangements if there's two kids, one grade off, same family to put them on the same schedule or.
Yes, so we're
A M or whatever.
Right, we've roughly split our our students in half. But we will always try to keep always work, the buildings have already worked together so that family groups would be on the same schedule. So if a family, if they have the same last name, they probably won't be an issue. But say there were different last names in the family with a blended family. So the buildings have already, we have sibling reports in Skyward, so the buildings have already already. So the buildings have already, we have sibling reports in Skyworks, so the buildings have already already addressed all of that.
I could jump in here real.
What did I have next?
Just real quick, I wanted to jump in there and say that this got brought up at the high school even just today is that we can work with families that have elementary and high school students. You've noticed in the small cohort model that we want to bring our most needful group back forward. But if there is a need for a family member or a high school watch the younger children, we can work with those families in order to accommodate that.
Actually, Deanna answered a lot of them. Last one I got is and I didn't see it. Maybe I missed it. If if a kid does make it to school and shows up with symptoms, symptoms, what's?
So every building has to have a COVID room. So if a student were to show up with symptoms, they would be isolated in the COVID room until they could be picked up or transported home for with their family. And then they would follow the protocols that are prescribed by our nurses. They're very specific. So each building has identified a COVID. A COVID seclusion room, basically.
All I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
I have a question for you that kind of comes off of Andy's question, Deanna. In the reopening plan, there's a picture of a classroom on page nine and it kind of lays out the square footage that Andy was asking about the six by six spot. But in that picture, there are desks with a piece of tape down the middle. Is that and there's two chairs at it. Those kids are, is that two students at that desk? How is that happening?
So I actually asked her same question. Yeah, I asked her same question because those are desks at Jody's, Jody's school and they are, we have some rooms that have a double student table. So one side is A, one side is B. So only student on Monday, Tuesday, student A would be there. Then it would be disinfected on Wednesday and student B would come on Thursday, Friday.
So they aren't there at the same time. I guess that was my question is there aren't two kids sitting at the table at the same time?
Nope. No, they're too close together.
Okay. That's all I had on that. Jess? Any questions?
Yes, I have some. Um, I'm wondering where we are at with vaccinations and setting all that up for our staff.
Okay, so I I met just met with the nurses yesterday about this. And we we are supporting the hospital in their endeavor to provide immunization clinics. We have to follow the the plan. And we're anticipating next week, they that group one B would be able to get immunizations. Group one B for staff members would mean people that are in multi generational households or folks that are over fifty with underlying conditions. So we will have staff members that will be eligible for immunization next week and we, the hospitals have an immunization clinic at the middle school. They really don't have the space at the hospital to do the immunization safely with social distancing. So I I think we're, I mean, they're going to continue to do them, but they're going to run big clinics probably at the middle school from now until we're done with clinics. So we have one, it's not advertised yet because they're still working on their details. As far as us running our own clinic, the nurses at this time, they don't, they don't get, we don't get access to the back to the image, to the vaccine vials. That is all through the hospital. So the all that will be done through the hospital. So as long as as the groups are able to be immunized, immunized, they'll have the vaccine clinics at the at the middle school and our staff will be able to go. So we have not advertised next week's event yet because we don't have the flyer yet from the the information yet. The hospital is producing that. So for those people that fall into those two categories that are staff members, they will be able to go on and fill out some information online and get their shot next next week.
Okay.
So that's group one B.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Jess. That's one B. Then group B would be other K twelve staff members, correct? Okay. And is there any time timeframe for those?
We don't, not not yet. I mean, we don't have control over that, but this actually group one B is coming sooner than I thought it was going to, I guess. So the hospital will is is working very closely with our nursing staff and my nurses work and with me. And so as soon as that's able to happen, we will have another clinic where staff can go get immunized.
Sorry, Jess. Yes, sir.
Scotty, our house has been all about this for all freaking year. If I remember what my wife said, it's somewhere right around the first of March, the rest of employees will be eligible, I think.
Yeah.
Don't hold me to that, but I thought that's what I.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
More with staffing questions. How are we looking with number of staff willing and able to come back? And then along those same lines, what do we do when something happens and we need subs? We don't have them. What are our capacity numbers for that?
So I'll answer the sub question. First, I guess. So Kim Bolt has contacted all of our substitutes to see who is willing to sub to sub in classes. And and she was at a couple of days ago when I talked to her about a fifty percent rate of people willing to come back and substitute. So not great, not great as far as that. Of course, if we had an exposure at school or at those classes, that would be shut down any, you know, at that time anyway, and people would have to isolate, self isolate for whatever the period of time that was prescribed based on the exposure. So the substitute issue has been a challenge for a lot of districts and it's a challenge, it's going to be an issue I anticipate for us as well. A lot of districts, their administration, their instructional coaches, their superintendents or whomever might be filling in and assisting with that. So that's that part. As far as staff that are teachers that are willing to return in person, Matt, can you can you address that?
Yeah, so we've worked with our staff on gaining a commitment. We haven't finalized that list yet. But as we were talking about with vaccinations, the the more, the more staff members we have vaccinated, the more I'm anticipating that larger numbers will want to come back and feel comfortable with coming back. So I I would even say that as we transition into this model and people get used to it, you know, in trying it on, that we might even have more people say, all right, I'm, you know, the teacher across the hallway from me. She seems to be fine and and I think I'll, you know, I'll come back as well. And so we're working, we'll be finalizing those commitments hopefully by the by the end of this week. But anything up until now was basically an expressed interest in in returning.
I would just hate for us to rush back and then have problems and turn it into kind of a daycare instead of an educational facility if we don't have the staffing to not only watch the kids but teach those kids. So I know that that has come up in other areas, that that's an issue that wasn't thought through before jumping in with too many kids coming back.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would echo that reasoning and understanding. One of the one of the fantastic things about schools is that they're they're a hub of resources. And so we can provide things like library books with even even just socialization. I would say with their peers, whether it's outside at recess or, you know, learning how to shoot baskets or something. You know, it is, I I believe it is beneficial for students to be around their peers. So, you know, even even with that said, I I think that our model will work and we can only, I I believe that we can only enhance what's taking place already. And so in knowing that, you know, this distance learning and virtual learning is a baseline. I think that our our efforts have been to increase what we're doing and provide more opportunities for kids. And so in building that out slowly, as we had talked about, it'll allow people to get comfortable and it'll it'll help us not shut down. You know, not, you know, mitigate any spread and provide those valuable learning opportunities for students.
And go, Andy.
I was going to say my wife just yelled at me from the next room. She thought after the at risk were done getting their shots, the rest of district employees would be eligible and it would be early to mid February.
That'd be great.
I know this was in the plan as far as the attestations and temperature taking. I'm just gonna throw it out there, but we know that families send kids dosed up on Tylenol before COVID. So how do we mitigate that or is that something we can't mitigate?
So that 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 as an issue, we've had parents that have sent and and it's challenging for families, like, do I stay home with my child? So I can't go to work and maybe lose my job? Or say if like, maybe they can make it, you know, maybe they can make it through school. But we're in a situation now where we just can't have that. So that the families will have attestation forms at home unless it's an older student that wants to do attestation on their phone. But that's also the reason for the second check at the front door. The building principals have talked about doing, you know, doing a spot check of students on every day, like they're going to select go, maybe do a classroom or maybe do ten students at random and do a spot check to ensure because we know you cannot have a fever in the morning and it can come, you know, two hours later, you'll have a fever. So there's, we we would love to say it's going to be a hundred percent foolproof, but we know that there will be people that people that send their kids to school. Other districts have had that issue. And it's shut them down sometimes because of that. So we just have to hope that everyone will follow the 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 rules. And if they don't, we hope that we are able to to catch it before it impacts a lot of students or staff not being able to come to work. So it'll be a challenge because it has been in the past and we just hope people will just follow the guidelines to keep everybody safe.
Hey, Deanna, I know there's, I know there's numerous districts that have invested in I'm not even sure what you call them. They're just units that go above. Everybody goes through one door.
Yeah.
And they take everybody's temperatures. They come in and if the little screen blinks red, you hang it right and you're done for the day.
Right. Right. Oh, we
I would think a four or five thousand dollar investment would be.
Yeah, we we have looked at those and they are four or five thousand dollars. It's scans kids, multiple kids at one time. We've actually kind of found, we found an alternative option that is also a scanner. We can't put, depending on the entrance, like Witstrand couldn't put six, five kids through their entrance at one time. It's too small. But we have on order, we're hoping they're arriving in a, I think in about the little bit later in January that our scanners, you don't have to touch them, they just walk by, put their head in front of it and it will, it shows on an app and then they'll, this, you know, if there's their temperature isn't on par, then they go. So go and they will go into the isolation room and they will have to go home. So we are, we know that we have to take into consideration people who are sending kids and failing to follow through with their attestation, not returning their form. Those things will be addressed. So people will have to follow the rules. We all have to follow the rules, the mask wearing, the PPE, doing the attestations, following the guidelines so that everyone can stay safe.
The only other thing I wanted to share was I do appreciate how much time has been put into this plan. And I also appreciate how methodically we've worked through and gradually bringing kids back and not running full force and then having to pull back because I, as a parent, I think that would have been beneficial to move forward too quickly and then have to pull back. So I I appreciate the speed that we have been working and continue to work.
Thank you, Jesslyn. I appreciate that.
Scott or Peggy?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
We're not board of members staff. We're just, this is just questions for Deanna.
So no questions on the reopening? Okay.
Thank you, everyone. I know that was long.
Thank you, Deanna. Thank you to your team that worked on that. The revisions to get it done. I appreciate it. All right. Put back a few pages here. All right, let's one of the board members had mentioned earlier tonight for some good news. Let's do the student rep reports. So Emma, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Hi.
Hi. So we started last week and we're just starting to slowly plan out Wish Week. So that is what we are starting to do.
Wish week, okay. Cool. Anything else?
No, that's, we just haven't really been doing many big things since we've gone back so far since break. But that is the main thing starting to do.
How are you doing?
Pretty good.
Good. Okay. Let's move on to Kate. You with us?
Yes, sir. We we just, we talked and we decided our reports are going to be super, super short so that we can go to bed. But from the student perspective to the return plan, I mean, it's a lot of information. And until like we have like our deadlines and stuff, we're just like hanging on. We're kind of in the fifth stage of like grief, I guess. We're just in the acceptance stage. So when we have a deadline, that will be good. But we're not, we're not holding our breath for anything at this point. But it's good to see all the work and stuff that's going into it. And the only other thing is conveying the vaccine. I thought it might be of interest to the board. So with the health occupations course that I'm in, that was an option for us, the eighteen and older students. So several of the students received the vaccine and I thought that was cool. So I thought I'd share that that class continues to be a big success. It's all in person. So it's gone really well. That is all.
All right, thank you. Jennifer?
Hi.
Eli, how are you?
I'm pretty good. Well, the only thing we're working on, like Emma said, is Wish Week. So we're not doing anything else. Yeah.
It's good to see you. All right. Thank you. Have a good evening. Go get some sleep. All right. Next, we'll do board reports. And I I don't usually report. I usually pass it along and but tonight I wanted to. And I had a couple of things I wanted to go through here. First, on our reopening plan, I want to get our kids back to school. And and as quickly as we can. But there's much more to that than just saying I want the kids back in school. We've got to use smart science and keep our kids healthy, use our best practices at PPE, keep our hundreds of employees safe. We have administrators and teachers and food service and bus drivers, para pros, intervention specialist or maintenance staff, custodians and volunteers who we absolutely have to keep safe. We want our kids back in school, but not at the price of hurting someone. So that's one of the things as we make these decisions, we we have to think about. And we have to weigh that risk. So we aren't just throwing ideas in a hat and pulling something out. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes and thoughtful process by your your board and your administrators that goes into this. The reopening plan that you saw tonight and we discussed tonight didn't just start tonight. That started back, the reopening plan started back in the spring when the state kicked us out of our schools. And through the summer and through the And through the summer and through the fall, we've been building the reopening plan. And in fact, back in August is when the board passed the resolution and I signed the reopening plan that put those steps in, into action. So it's not like just started this, we've been working on a reopening plan for months. And we followed all of, in, in, into that, we had to follow all of the rules. We didn't just make this stuff up or try to make it hard for someone. We had to follow the CDC Center for Disease Control Guidelines, we had to follow the state guidelines and the governor and the Department of Health, Department of Labor and Industries and our local health office, the Ben Franklin Health District. We had to follow all of those rules. And the plan progressively moved the district from online distance learning up to a hybrid model, which is what we're talking about now, onto a back-to-school in-person instruction model. And we followed that plan. We stuck to what we said we were gonna do. And, and that's been hard sometimes. We, we wanted, we want kids back in school, we want our teachers back in school, we wanted it to be normal again. But it isn't, so we're all working through that. And now we're at that stage where we have to decide how, how do we do and what do we do from here? How do we get to the next step? And the reopening plan tonight is that next step getting us there. And there's been many challenges and obstacles along the way. Many of them are unseen by our community members, by parents and by our kids. They don't, they don't, they don't see all of the things that are, are a real challenge to deal with. There's logistical constraints, you heard some of those tonight, the need for supplies, discussions with our labor unions regarding the safe return of their membership. The money to do reopening, everything costs money, none of this is free. So finding the money in our already tight budget with the dwindling reserve fund, we, is hard. And allocating that money to this process of reopening and getting kids back into school is a thoughtful thing that we have to do and put our time to. Our plan focused it on safely reopening the schools. And the sliding scale that Deanna showed in her, her presentation, that moves us up to back to school. At stage five, we're back in school. But there's a lot of steps along the way and there's a lot of people that have some control over what we can do. And it's, it's not easy. There's no, there's no agenda, there's no motive to try to keep kids from going back. There's no motive to try to keep the parent or the staff from going back or any motive to force them to go back if it's not safe. Myself and the other elected board members, Matt, our superintendent, have heard the voices from our community, both sides of the issue. Within my own family, I get both sides of the issue. On our board, we have both sides of the issue, so. There, there are those that want to open immediately and those that have reservations about it. 25% or so of our student body want to stay remote. There's a reason for that. They don't feel comfortable with it. So we hear that and we have to provide learning for them as well. The district is absolutely dedicated to doing what's best for our kids. Every conversation we have is about students. Every conversation we have is about effort. The, this, our staff members, they were my teachers. I sure as hell don't want them sick. I don't want to hurt employees. I don't want to hurt our para pros. I don't want to hurt our principals. So we have to be smart about how we return. As I said at the beginning, I want our kids back in school. That's, that's where our direction is. There are other things that impact that, that we heard about tonight, that you've heard about in other meetings. But there comes a time when we, when it's, we have to weigh that risk. Is, is this the best choice moving that direction? And I, I think we're at that point now. I think we need to decide this next step of letting kids return to school, staff supporting that and getting them back in-person education is important. And that's the direction we've always said we were gonna go. And we've followed the plan up to this point, so I don't think that it's a good idea to change from that plan now. I think that we've made really good decisions up till here and we should do that moving forward. If, if there are staff that are uncomfortable being in the building, I understand that. If there are students that are uncomfortable, I understand that. But there are students and there are staff that want to be back to work and they want to be in the building and they want to be with other kids. We have to get that direction, so that, that's my personal opinion on return to school. We've, we've been smart up till now. I don't think there's any reason to stop being smart. We're doing the right things and we've done the right things since we had to do this stuff back in March. And it has been a slow process and you can compare us to other districts and it's a, we can fight that battle all day long. They all have different issues. This is Prosser and these are our schools and our kids and our teachers and we're gonna do it right here. So I, I think that getting kids back in-person education, absolutely critical, but do it safely. So that's my position. Our next, the other thing I want to talk about was the Crystal Apple, I'm done with preaching about back to school. I'm gonna move on to something positive. The Crystal Apple Award for Excellence in Education. We had two of our awesome staff members that were selected for the Crystal Apple Award here in the district. It was Dean Smith and Connie Hatchell. And they were selected to move on to the ESD level competition where there's nine other districts that participate in, in it. And I was fortunate enough to get to write a letter of recommendation for the two of them. And they really worked hard. When we transitioned from in-person school in March overnight to virtual school, a, a team of folks came together and figured out what we were gonna do. And Connie and Dean went about teaching it to the 250 staff members that had to learn overnight, the, the new computer platforms that we were gonna be teaching on, Canvas and Teams and all of those programs that your kids or our kids are using. Those, the staff members, it was brand new to them too. And Dean and Connie taught that to them. So I'm so grateful for them and I, I hope that they move on out of the DSD and they'd be able to compete at the Washington State Teacher of the Year program as well. So hopefully we'll hear more about that as they move on. The next issue I want to talk about was our board. The district has a board committee policy, it's policy 1240. And then we have a citizens advisory policy, which is policy 4110. And both of them are like 20 years old. They've never, we haven't touched them in 20 years. So the idea of committee work has changed a great deal in thinking from 20 years ago. We've used it a little bit here in the district recently. We used it for our, the drug, drug testing and education program. We used it for the dyslexia committee. And we use it for the safety and security committee. But there's much more we can do with committees. And committee work has its place on our board. And I, I think that it's a, an area that we should explore more. We need to include our administrators and our teachers and most importantly, our parents in that committee work. We need to hear from our community about what we're doing in their school district. And we can do that through including them on committees to look at projects and programs and policies before the board makes a decision on it. And I could benefit from that voice, I think our whole board could, I think the district could. So I, I would like to start expanding that program and relook at that policy. And some of the areas that I thought of, and you may have others, board members, I, CTE. I know there's a separate committee that works with the CTE program itself, but to include board members with the CTE program. I, I love that program. I love that department. I think we could do some great work there. The counseling, a counseling committee, our human resources, capital projects, curriculum, I know there's a curriculum committee, but there could be a voice through the, the board, through committee work toward curriculum. And some long-range planning stuff, looking at our budget and safety, athletics and activities, buildings and facilities, technology, STEM and, and executive committees. When I attended Leadership Wazda a couple of years ago, we reviewed the value of committee work and the engagement of stakeholders and how that increases through the use of a committee. And getting that voice from the parents and getting the voice from our teachers. We're, we're writing and pushing policy or adopting policy that F members, we should have that. So over the next few weeks, I'm gonna send you some information that I put together, copy of what our policies are, the 20-year-old policies. Take a look at those and then maybe we can put together a steady session before meeting or after and talk about it and see if it's a direction that we would like to go as a board. And the last, I think this is the last one, hopefully you guys are prepared to me now, just to think about, from the district and a board liability standpoint. Not, these two issues that I want to talk about aren't just related to COVID, but definitely concern the issue of COVID and returning to school. There's two kind of general areas. We have a district policy that the district, it's policy 1732, that the district has to ensure the board and the board members individually from liability that arises from our official duties as board members. I don't know, it's called a directors and officers liability policy. I don't know what that amount is. I don't know what the stipulations are of the coverage and what it protects us from. But we should know. So as board members, you need to know that there, there is a policy out there that covers ensuring you for your official duty on the board. So, so I'd like to find out what that is. And I, I think it would be important for each of you to know what that policy covers and who writes it and what the policy language is. From the district and board member liability, our risk management company covers different areas. It's clear risk, clear risk and we've dealt with them on many other issues. But on this particular issue of COVID, clear risk, their litigation manager has said that COVID-19 exposure and illnesses are not covered. They, they won't cover liability under a COVID-19 exposure or illness. So that makes the district liable then, or could, there's some liability on the district if the insurance company won't cover COVID-19 exposure. And, and if you dig down into that a little more, there, from a board member perspective for yourself, there is no immunity. The, our insurance company, ClearRisk, says that there's no immunity for school district employees or, which includes board members' liability from COVID-19 claims. So if someone gets sick, someone dies and there's a wrongful death suit against the district, that isn't covered under our clear risk policy. In-person education, ClearRisk said that in-person education, that this is, they're not going to cover us if, if there is a, an issue. But they strongly urge all member districts to follow the local state and health authority guidelines regarding in-person education. So that means we, we absolutely have to follow what this, the health department says, what the department of health says, what every agency is telling us to do and, and then some. Because if there's any risk of liability on us, the insurance company isn't going to cover it or the district. So as, as board members, I think you need to know that. Unless the guidance changes or their directives change, there is some liability on the district itself and on individual directors. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. I'm not saying we need to change our plan or do something differently, but the people that are asking us to go back to school, I think our community needs to know what they're asking. They're asking their board to make a decision that could potentially put their district and their board of directors in personal liability and the district itself on the line if the insurance company doesn't cover those claims. So we're, we're doing this work. We don't get paid for it. We do it as a volunteer. And your personal liability is on the line for making those decisions. So I just wanted to share that with you and go into this thing with wide open eyes because the decisions we make here, the five of us can affect your family and you, and our district. So that's my cheering news for you all. We can move on to the next board report, which is Jess.
I don't have anything to share.
Peggy?
I don't have anything to share either, other than I really do appreciate what the administrators and Matt have been working through. It's just, it's just very hard to, to not see a way to move this forward for our kids. It's, it's been a long, slow process. And I appreciate that safety is always our number one, our number one prerogative on, on any of our decisions. It's safety for staff, safety for our kids. But it's the, the social and emotional health that I really worry about right now for everyone. So that's it. I don't have any other reports tonight.
Thank you, Peggy. Andy?
You know, after listening to Scotty, he gives you a lot of things to think about. But I'd like to start thinking the admin and, and, and Matt and Deanna. That was a lot more detailed than I thought it was gonna be and actually pretty reassuring. With that said, my opinion would probably be like a straight-up K5 model. I almost jumped right to step four. That again is just my opinion, but you know, we've been off for a year. If the kids, in any kids or families that are afraid, you know, they, you know, we got 25% can stay home. You know, it's, it's distance thus far and it'll continue to be distance until it's safe. I think as long as we follow all the protocols, stay distance, masks, you know, all the basic stuff, I think everybody'd be plenty safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Mr. Coleman?
Well, I won't be as short, but so starting off, I look at a, a kid three years ago to move to Washington from Idaho. It was a, my dad was a logger and we moved to Washington because my dad wanted to work for Hanford. Right, we moved into this community in Prosser and it's always had my heart. And I can tell you that essential personnel, I will tell you what essential personnel means to me. It means somebody that rescues somebody from something and I'm essential personnel in my job because people flush toilets and need water and need essential care and those kinds of things. And so teachers, educators, mentors is what I look at. As they've always been essential personnel to me. And we'll start off with Andy Gilbertson and Mark Little, Dave Wyatt, John Bell, Tom Moore, Kevin Lusk, Doug Fadler, Griz Adams, Mr. Bailey, shop teacher, Herb Schmidt, Valerie Baker, Connie Hatchell, who was Connie Dodson, Barbara Warner, folks like that, Jim Pillars. I was in a tough time in my life when my parents got divorced and they were essential personnel for me. They, they reached out to me and grabbed a hold of me and made sure that I was loved and needed and wanted. And the teachers in this school district are essential personnel. I understand that some of them have medical issues or kids at home with issues or whatever, but you're essential personnel. You are. And I appreciate that you have a union and I appreciate that you're unified to make sure that, that everybody. Treats you as, as the same, but in the end, you're a school, you're, you're, you're a teacher, you're a, you're a. You're important to the kids that show up every day. There's a lot of kids out there and, and all these teachers will tell you, you know, let's go back to Larry Yutter. Teachers that, that you show up every day. And you see a kid needs socks. That, that's simple socks. Kids need something to eat. If anybody tells you that you're not essential, they're wrong. Essential personnel. And I. Principals, administrators. You guys are important to those fun and we are the tip, if you, if you would say the tip of the spear. But Scotty knows what I mean by that, but you guys are the ones that are in there battling every day. And for me, we need to be, we need to be setting examples for these kids. And you're going to get middle school kids, you, Mr. Denny, I listened to Mr. Denny and I, sometimes I think we forget what middle school kids. Middle school kids are trying to work their way out of doing stuff. You guys ever remember that? And elementary kids, they're begging to go to school. They're begging to the school because they want to. They want to show up and visit with their teachers and tell them what they did over the weekend. And high school kids, they're trying to get out of there. They just want whatever it takes to get this taken care of and move on to the next stage in their life. And, and so we can take their input with a grain of salt and understand where we're at, but. We're, we, we've got a tough road to hoe and I'm just telling you right now that, that. Teachers are more essential than anybody gives them credit for. They're more essential and they need to be there. They need to be there for the kids. They didn't start this for. A job to make money. If any of them did and looked ahead, they would know better. They, they know this is not about making money. And most of the teachers or all the teachers that I know, I talked to sixteen of them, I wrote it down today. They all want to go back to school. They all want to be back there for their kids. And, and, and maybe they just said it because I'm a, a school board member, but most of them, they don't look at me like that. They, they look at me just as some other guy they can visit with and so. Let's, uh, let's get after it. Let's get back to school. We got a great bunch of people that are all, all after and we can adapt and modify after that. And. There's no right answer. There's no wrong answer. We're not setting a trend. I don't even care about. Schools this way and schools that way. Let's just get after it. Let's get in there. Let's do what we can. And then if, if, if we got to modify, we modify. We move off and I, and I really do appreciate all the rest of the board members. Views is that, yeah, we don't want to get in there and then have to pull back, but for me, that's my personality. I'm in there. I'm ready to. I'm ready to knock it out and, and be a trend setter and that doesn't mean I'm right or wrong. It just means I'm who I am and you all know me. So, so let's just keep battling and, and I appreciate all those teachers I said something about earlier and appreciate all you guys. And let's just, let's just get out there and get after it and we'll see what happens and, and I appreciate all your efforts and. And we'll go from there.
Thanks, Scott. All right. Superintendent's report, Mr. Ellis.
So I want to start off with the fact that January is board appreciation month. And so.
Of course it is.
Yeah. So this is not so much for the board.
That bunch of losers. Who's that? A bunch of losers.
It, it's not so much for you guys, but more of the hundred or so people watching. That I wanted to say that I appreciate you and somebody brought it up that, you know, it, this position doesn't come with an exorbitant salary. Or even, even a lot of prestige. It comes with a lot of people in your ear and people pressuring you and sometimes they're angry. And so I, I just want to express to you that I appreciate your passion for public education. I appreciate what you've done for Prosser and stepping up in the volunteerism and you serving our community and you serving our country and so. And state. And so I, I just wanted to say that to you. If you haven't thanked a board member lately, thank them for the work that they do. It's important and I, I appreciate your leadership and your guidance. I wanted to cover some dates. Open Public Meetings Act is set to expire on January nineteenth. There's no indication of which way the governor will go on that. If we'll continue to have to meet virtually or if we can actually start meeting in person. And I know that all of us have struggled with that too, and missing the kind of the camaraderie involved with meeting in person. And so I look forward to the day where we can begin to start meeting in, in person again. Kevin talked about WIA setting the date of February first and the hopeful reinstatement of athletics. And Eric Flores talked about tutoring resuming on January nineteenth. And the reason why we, we kind of pushed tutoring out was, of course, with Thanksgiving and Christmas, we've seen spikes in cases. And so being mindful of that, so we'll start tutoring again on the nineteenth and get that information out to parents. Basically, the information we covered tonight was around expanding services. And so. Jess, Jesslyn said that earlier that we've been pretty methodical. We've observed, we've learned from a lot of districts and we're, we're at the point now where I believe that we're ready. To, to start introducing students, more students on campus. I sent the board communication today that just came out yesterday from the Ben Franklin Health District. And so that, you know, the fact that it came out yesterday is one of those things that this situation has been difficult to, to navigate. Because you just can't get ahead of information. It changes so rapidly and literally people are building the plane as they fly it. And so we've worked hard on, hard on that and trying to, trying to push that. And our administrators have worked really hard on, on adapting to that and dealing with new information. But Dr. Amy Person had said that she is recommending that schools start transitioning to hybrid. For all ages, starting January twenty-fifth. And so that's one of the information points there. That we're working with. Our principals have planned, i- if you look at, I knew, you know, I know that we presented that PowerPoint, but in the board packet. There was kind of a task, task analysis sheet that our principals put together on, you know, doing, doing done or initiated. In process or completed. And so we still have a couple of those, those moves to make in preparing our building. I think that we'll be able to tie those up fairly rapidly. What I've heard from the board in the past and what I heard from the board tonight, and you can correct me if I heard this wrong. Is that the board would like to continue to push forward with reopening. You know, safety is a consideration, but the board would like to see us reopen, reopen schools. And build out the programs that we've already been building out and get kids back in contact with, with teachers and with adults. And kind of in that safe space of school. And so we're working towards that. We have MOUs that are still, we're still developing with the principals, the PSC and the PEA. The PSC, we have just recently signed a memorandum on. COVID leave and if employees need to get tested or they need to see a doctor. In kind of in, in anticipation, in case that they contact that on campus and how we're going to deal with that as a, as a system. In addition, we also had, we also laid off some. PSC employees, so our classified employees. Just because the fact that we weren't in person, we didn't need as many employees. And so in anticipation of reopening, we're bringing back all PSC employees. Their hours may, may look a little bit different, but we're bringing them back. And tying up those loose ends with our MOUs. I know that I'll get questions about this if I, if I don't talk about it, but dates and timelines. We're going to try and start is, as soon as we can. And, and so if, if we can get kids back on campus. You know, within, you know, within the next week. And we are able to tie up a lot of our agreements on that. We're going to try and push forward with that. I, I think that at the latest, we're looking at a transition model February first. But one of the, one of the things that we've really worked with the board on, and I'll continue to work with the board on is keeping the board apprised of our different moves. If we kind of have, you know, to go ahead tonight, we'll continue implementing and continue to, to build out. And keep the board apprised of it, but with the understanding that the board won't have to approve a lot of our plans, having seen those plans. And so we'll, we'll answer questions as possible, but we'll move forward with the plan that we presented tonight. So if that's okay with the board. We'll, we'll move in that direction. And I just want to echo some of the things that I heard. You know, so from different board members and I've been hearing, you know, I know that many of you've been CC'd on a lot of the emails. This has been a frustrating situation. And, and nobody's to blame for, for the, the spread of COVID or this virus. It's been frustrating for teachers to have to learn to teach in, in new ways. Just as we experienced tonight, there are hiccups with virtual learning. And it, in, it's been a struggle. I know that our parents have been frustrated. And they've tried to, you know, give support for their students and tried to keep their students occupied and logged on at the right time. I know that our principals have, have been frustrated too with. You know, what, watching populations and having made progress in the past and then watching some of those efforts. Kind of dissolve over, you know, over this period of a year or so. So in spite of it being, you know, being a big frustration, we'll continue to, to try and reopen and do our best. And even look to the future about ways that we can build out summer school programs and keep kids on campus with tutoring and things like that. So I, I would take any comments or questions from the board at this time or any, any direction that they would like to offer.
I would just say, Matt, that the, your, your board has already approved. A plan, a reopening plan. Back in August and we've been working that plan. So the movement forward is continuing the work of that plan. So additional action by the board to approve it, I don't, as far as I'm concerned, and the other board members may feel differently, but. We've already passed a resolution on reopening schools and. This plan is, that was presented tonight as part of that. So the recommendations of you and your staff are the direction we, we want to go for me. And unless we revoke our resolution or change the guidance we've already given you, I think you have your marching orders. As far as I can tell, the board has already said, this is, this is what we want to do when things are right. When things are safe and we can do it, if that time is now and it is, then let's, let's move. Unless the other board members forbid.
Today, that's my, that's my thing is today. And I understand that. You have, you have all the. Health department and the governor bless his little heart, all those folks, but. Today, Matt, we, we should open up Monday or February first or whatever it comes to, not trying to put pressure on you. I just, that's my, that's my, my thoughts. And it's easy for me to say, it's hard for you to do. I appreciate you.
Yeah, I, I understand that. We've always tried to give the board advance notice in meetings before making any moves. Or at least we've tried to honor the position and honor your leadership and your voices, board members to. To be able to, to approve or amend for things like that. So. Yeah, but just. Connector.
Andy.
Yeah, Matt, I, I'm, I'm happy to hear. That that's the way we're going. I'd like to see it ramp up a little quicker personally, but that's just me. I think February one is, is a. I mean, it's, it's a good start point. Let's, let's hit it and let's hit it hard. I, I'd like to see maybe even up to middle school by, say, March one, but we'll see how it plays out.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Ellis? All right. Thank you, sir. Let's look down the agenda here. We either did the consent and the items. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, January twenty-seventh here on Zoom. If that changes, we'll make sure that everyone knows, we'll publish it accordingly. Now the, what is it? Ten fifteen? The board is going to reset.
I apologize. It's not like I haven't talked enough, but I, I meant to mention one thing. Mrs. Huntington's class eighth grade, I believe it is. Sent me a, a bunch of letters on Veterans Day for my service and. I will be sending them a response and I apologize that I haven't done it yet. I've just been tied up with some other work things, but. Pulled at my heartstrings a lot. Appreciated their, their appreciation for Veterans Day and. And for all the things that we've fought and me and you and skip a bump, hey, about a bump, Marvin Best bump, let's give him Marvin Best. Good man. So we all fought through a lot and I appreciate those, those letters in Mrs. Huntington's class. I, I hope, I hope somebody will pass that along. Mr. Danny, hope you, you're still here and pass that along. So I will send a, a personal letter back to them and I, I appreciate it. I. Yeah, it was awesome. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Scott. The board's going to recess into for a few minutes here and then resume in an executive session. It is approximately one hour. We won't take any action following the executive session. We'll adjourn from there. The meeting is to discuss complaints or charges against a public officer employee under RCW forty-two thirty-one ten one F. So we'll adjourn the regular meeting. It is ten twenty. And board members, use your executive session login and log in. We'll start back up at ten twenty-five. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Thank you.